Select Board meeting to order for Tuesday, April 22, 2025. This is a special meeting, the sixth of the eight Select Board meetings we're having this month. So, was the meeting properly worn, John Potter?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Nope.
Very good. All right, so I have a few chair remarks. It's a busy night tonight, and I just want to make sure everyone knows that they are welcome. The Select Board is dedicated to our task of reanalyzing the FY '26 budget. We are in earnest, we are sincere, and we are serious about our task. Some may find this a difficult and frustrating process because there are many competing ideas, but let's try to get through this with the least amount of emotion and the most civility we can muster. I brought tonight a quote that my late brother-in-law, Charlie McLaughlin, used to say to his classroom, which was probably within hearing of our BOHS alumni on this table. It's from the Dalai Lama. "All I can do is engage with complete sincerity, then there can be no regret." So, that is my remarks. John, do you have comments?
I don't have any tonight.
All right. Select Board members, do you have comments before we begin?
I do not.
I have a couple announcements.
Very good.
Okay, happy birthday, everybody, April 22. Beautiful day. So, on Saturday, from 9:00 to 11:00, the Sunrise and Noontime Rotary Groups, Brattleboro Food, COCOOP shareholders, and Connecticut River Conservancy and community volunteers are doing a morning of cleaning at the Hinsdale Bridge and Island property. And it will help kick off the first spring and summer of the Brattleboro-Hinsdale Greenway, which is a one-mile walking loop of the island and bridges. So, there's a lot going on Saturday, I know, but that's happening. And I also want to, just, so Greg Lesch, who ran the Chamber for 20 years, there's a memorial for him on Saturday at St. Michael's Episcopal Church on Bradley Avenue at 11:00 a.m. And then there is a reception to follow at the Museum and Art Center, starting at 12:30. He was a really important person to our community, and if you have time on Saturday, come for part of it.
Okay. Thank you. All right, then. Public participation is next, and there may be people here who are here to discuss the library hours. And, of course, this topic is not on the agenda, and it is part of the draft budget that will be presented on Thursday. And so, there's really nothing that we can respond to with regard to the library tonight. So, I'm going to ask that any people with comments on the library would speak for only a minute, and if they have more to say, they can come back on Thursday. And then, and then we'll just allow for an orderly presentation of other comments that are not on tonight's meeting. And tonight's meeting is solely to discuss possible service reductions to public safety. So, are...
You better mention the overflow.
Oh, yeah. Tim, do you want to look for more chairs? I think that would be helpful. More chairs? There's one more here.
There's only, you're pretty much taking the ones we see, but all taken.
Okay, and then, as I said, there's an overflow room upstairs, and if you're watching, then you can come down to speak if you'd like to say something. So, I would recommend that, so that everybody can be comfortable and still be engaged. So...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I was wondering if we could just see how many people actually want to speak to the library, because what I'm thinking is that we're probably going to have a packed agenda on Thursday as well, and it might be useful to hear, you know, as much as we can tonight from folks about the library. Just thinking if there are just a few, maybe we could find out how many there are.
Well, here's the thing, we can find out. Are there people here to speak on the library? Please raise your hand. One, two, three.
A few kind of in the back.
Four.
You got more back?
All right. So, as I said, let's hear from each of the library people first, for a minute, and assuming that there's 10 people or so, that would allow us to resume our meeting and make sure that not only other people with items in public participation can speak, but also that we can get through our presentation tonight.
Can I also say something?
Yes.
In regards to the library, I think all of us on the Select Board really appreciate all of the emails, phone calls, reaching out, testimonials, and advocacy that we've been hearing, would we all agree? So, that, so if you don't have a time to talk tonight, just know that your emails and your calls and your advocacy is heard. So, thank you.
So, man in the red shirt, please come to the microphone and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Stephen Minkin, longtime Brattleboro resident. First, I just want to, you know, I only have a minute, I want to say thank you to all of you, because your service is something I really do admire, and you do have difficult decisions to make. We need to remember that the library was cut already. This is not new. We lost Thursday evenings, Saturday evenings, and so on. So, it was a convenient, there was a big battle over that as well. There was a budget cut already. So, you're cutting something that's been cut already. Secondly, it's just kind of a meta point, and I don't want to sound as if I'm lecturing anyone and so on, because I know your hearts are in the right place, but spreadsheets are, create an illusion. I've seen cuts to, like, the research library and so on and so forth. Spreadsheets give you a sense of satisfaction, but in fact, they do not give you a qualitative sense of what's going on. So, when you're looking at this, just don't get me fooled by the spreadsheets. What you think you're saving is actually a cost to the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, library comments. Please come to the front, please, library comments. There were people in the back of the room who raised their hand, said they had...
They're making their way.
Okay, very good. Come to the microphone, please, and state your name and where you're from, please.
Hi, my name's Emily Perez. I'm actually from Texas, but I moved here, and I love the library. I feel like 11:30 p.m. decision is a bit weird, just saying. And, cutting these hours means denying service to a certain group of people in town. So, if you cut the hours at night, people who can only go to the library at night, if they have a nine-to-five, and that's when you want to cut it off, they don't have access to the library. Parents in the morning, teenagers who may not have a safe place at home, elderly. So, I don't know, just think about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next. Someone else coming up from the back?
Hi, my name's Marta Bernbaum, a Brattleboro resident, and I want to say thank you, guys. I don't envy the difficult task you have ahead of you. But I want to mention also that not only is the library going to suffer federal funding cuts, but to lose local as well, it's, you know, we could potentially lose the whole thing. And it's something that is extraordinary importance to everyone. You know, there's so many different people that depend on this library for what it offers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Ken, yes?
Hi, Ken Fay, District Eight. I am a firm supporter of the library. I use it often. I see all the good things that they do. And just the other day, we were raising the, we were talking 45 minutes or an hour before cutting the hours, we were talking about raising the out-of-town prices. So, that was, that seems odd. And anyway, they do a lot, their part, you know, STAR has a great group, they do a lot of social stuff, too, social work, you know, the people who come in. It's a place for the unhoused, to look at the, use the computers and try to better themselves. And thank you very much, I hope you reconsider.
Thank you. Are there more people in the back who raised their hand earlier? No, okay.
Is this about the library?
This is specific to the library.
From you, Anthony Moody, Brattleboro, Vermont. I'm here because, you know, every cut that we possibly make is going to be difficult. I understand that. The library cuts are going to affect the entire community if they happen. I know you're mandated to look for something, but really, the best things to do is going to be going across the board, so that everybody hurts a little bit. If you make any one group particularly angry, you're going to see it. And we're all gonna, we're all going to experience it one way or another, so just a little bit from everyone is going to make a lot more sense than a lot from something that's so loved. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. You with the fish on your shirt? Oh, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Morgan, I'm a Brattleboro resident. I've made good use of the library all my life as a place to go and exist in a public space that is welcoming. When I, I'm a young person, I don't have any money to go into a store and purchase something and hang out there, but I can go to a library, and there's lots of resources and friendly people. So, it's a wonderful place. And it also hosts so many events that are so rejuvenating for our community, so many opportunities to get together, and it's free to participate in.
Thank you very much. Bethany?
Hi, Bethany Ranquist, this will probably be the shortest that I ever speak. Tonight, the topic for tonight's agenda is public safety, right? Okay, I just wanted to say that in conversation about cutting hours at the library, I would like it noted that you're considering cutting hours at one of the most open, public, welcoming, safe places for the majority of members in our community, including our kids and our teenagers. So, if you consider cutting hours, then you're considering cutting a safe, warm, like, substance-free location that our kids and teens can go to anytime. Also, the library would have been an awesome place to have this meeting, because there's a lot more space.
All right. Anyone else? Please. Your name, please.
Hello, I am Jubilee, I'm a Brattleboro resident. And the library is just like a place that anyone can go. It is a place that is for the community, and it is clearly, and clearly the community is there. You can see everyone who is speaking up for it. They are here, and they don't want 30% less time at it.
Thank you. Okay. Abby?
Abby Manoukian, District Eight rep. I just wanted to shout out to all the youth who came to this meeting. I feel like it's the most youth I've ever seen at a Select Board meeting, and I think that speaks a lot to how passionate they feel about the library and how they want to be involved in decision-making. And I just wanted to give a special shout out. Thanks.
All right. I said I'd hear from Tim? I'm sorry?
There's one more youth walking up the stairs right now who wants to speak, she's like running up the stairs.
All right. Is there another person who would like to speak? Go right ahead. Yeah, well, we'll get the person walking up.
Hi, I'm Katie Wilson, a Brattleboro resident, and I think that one of the other things that should be kept in mind when thinking about the library budget is that it is likely to face some reductions from federal funding as well. While it may not be a direct, like, federal fundee, we receive money from, like, the Vermont Humanities Council, which is likely unfunded, and some other federal funding that will not be available. So, it's already facing funding cuts, even before we consider town money.
Thank you. I think there's a, the student who has arrived. Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I'm a little bit late. My name is Rae Carpenter Ranquist. I'm a Brattleboro resident, and I'm here sharing my thoughts as a teen in the community. I'm also a member of the Teen Advisory Board at the library, me and a bunch of other teenagers that sadly could not be here today. I want to, I want to express my opinion on this. I am extremely opposed to any budget cuts or cuts to the library's hours. We spoke to you, me and a couple others, on April 8th about the value that our library offers and to voice our support for expansion of its hours and programming. To hear that the library may be lessening its availability to the public, especially to the youth in our town, is so disappointing. Brattleboro Memorial Library is more than just a place to check out books. It's a welcoming space for kids and teens in Brattleboro. For many of us, the library is one of the only places we can go after school or on a weekend, on a weekend, to hang out that is safe, free, and warm, and parent-approved as well. It gives us access to not just books, but internet, creative programings, and a place to just be ourself. The teen space is the library, at the library is where I go with my friends all the time, but every room in the library is important. Every hour that it's open late is, or in the evening, is important. There's meetings that are held, there's homeschool groups, there's clubs that gather there, there's community events that are free, that anyone can join and help to build the community together. Also, this library has utilities. This is, I call it a utility library as well, I don't think that's the word, but we offer, they offer things, not just books. You can get e-bikes and, like, gardening tools, and museum passes. There's so much that the library offers that they would not be able to, and we would not have access to if the hours and the budget was cut. The library wouldn't be the resource it is now.
Thank you very much, Rae. All right.
Thank you.
That's it for the library.
There's another comment in the back.
Ivan, is this about the library?
Yes.
You can be the last one with the... You can be the last one with a library topic.
Well, Ivan's walking up, I'm going to give a plug, too. Tomorrow night, from six to eight, there's a America Two-Fifty planning session for At the Library. So all y'all who love the library, be there tomorrow night from six to eight to help plan America Two-Fifty. Thank you.
Hello, Ivan Hennessy, District Eight. This is actually not for the select board, this is for all the youth who showed up. And I want to ask you to remember the folks on the select board, not just what they say, what they vote, because a lot of you are going to be able to vote in March, when some of these folks are up for reelection. And if you're sixteen, or seventeen, or eighteen, nineteen, when that comes around, you'll have a chance to respond to their choices tonight, or, I guess, in this budget cycle, rather. Thank you.
All right. Are there comments that people have that are not associated with public safety? What's the one? Yes, Tim? You have comments that are not associated with tonight's agenda and not directed about the library?
Yes.
Please join us.
Hi there, Tim Wessel, District Nine. I still say three. I wanted to very quickly, and this is not about the library, but of course, my family and I also love the library. I haven't met a lot of, in our community, who doesn't, who don't. I wanted to just relay a quick story and a moment of appreciation. And that is that about forty-eight hours ago, my wife and my son and I were bicycling on the West River Trail, things we love to do together. And it was a Easter, lovely Easter day, if you remember. And my son went by a poorly controlled, let's say, dog. And that dog attacked him very viciously as I was trying to catch up and, and prevent this from happening. I was unable to do so. The dog knocked him down and bit him. Luckily, he turned away on the scapula area of his back. And so it was very traumatic, obviously. I was guilt-ridden that I hadn't seen this coming, of course, and wasn't able to reach him in time. So I'm busy comforting him and doing everything we can. The community kind of started rallying around. Unbeknownst to me, someone else who witnessed this called Brattleboro Police. I had no idea. So we hobbled him crying and, you know, I'm holding him and some community members are helping us with our bikes get back to, it was near the bridge, if you, if you know, it's like a quarter mile, maybe half a mile. So we were walking back as quickly as we can, which is not very quickly. And towards us walks two Brattleboro Police Officers. And of course, I didn't even know anyone had called them. So it was this wonderful, magical moment. And I, I said to my son, who was still crying his eyes out, "Look, we've, we've got a couple officers here for you, they're here for you." And he instantly brightened and stopped crying and it was clear he was still in pain. The officers, who I had never met before, which I found fairly remarkable, because I know a lot of the officers with my time on the select board and working with them, I think they were new, they were kind, they told him he was very brave, they took pictures of the wound, they said it looked like it was not too serious and it didn't need immediate dressing, but we should go immediately to the, to the ER, which we did. And I just wanted to, because there's a lot of appreciation in this room, and I wanted to make sure that story got out. One of the greatest things about sitting on the select board is hearing the nice stories along with all of the tough things that you're facing right now. So I just wanted to say thank you to the new officers at BPD and for your help and kindness. Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Is he, is he doing okay, Tim?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Are there others who are here to talk about something other than the library and public safety? Yes. Jackie?
Jackie Reese, District Nine rep. That inspired me to tell my little short story. I work at the Latches and we oftentimes have difficult guests and people who come to the library, I mean, to the theater, not the library, but the theater. And although I do understand that it does happen at the library also. So we have an ongoing relationship with the police department and their wonderful exchanges that I've had with them several times. But what happened today was really very special. Two members of the BRAC team came in to introduce themselves, and I thought how wonderful it was. I didn't even know when I first looked at them that they were police. They were two really great-looking young people, a man and a woman, and they just introduced themselves and said, "If you need to call us for any reason, please do, and we will make ourselves available for your theater-goers," who sometimes, I understand, have some fear with driving, walking to their cars at night. So I just wanted to share how non-threatening these guys were, how friendly they were, and just easy, easy to talk to. And I'm really looking forward to having them downtown more and seeing them all the time.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, more people who are here not to speak about possible reductions in public safety and not to speak about the library. Yes?
Yeah, I'll hand something out, too. I'll be quick here. Just give some information. You can read later if you have to. I'll be quick, because I know you've got a lot going on here. Steve Zaluzny, I spoke last week a little bit about the history of Brattleboro, and so I expanded on that a little bit more with some of what you're going to read there. Trying to make observations and, and give you my observations of the history of Brattleboro and how things have evolved. And I guess in general, one of the things I'd like to point out that's important.
Steve, this is not about, is this relating to the public safety budget?
No, no. There's some things that might mention the budget in there, but I just want to make, I'll make one quick statement.
Okay.
You know, basically, what I see in Brattleboro over the years is that we have a lot of social services and they're attracting people to our area. We are not, in my, it didn't evolve the other way, that we have a lot of people in need here and then we created social services. And I think that's relevant to consider that fact in going forward. Okay? That's all I have to say for now.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate if you would read that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments that are not associated with tonight's budget topic? Kate O'Connor would like to speak.
Kate O'Connor, Brattleboro. I want to take advantage of this really big, interested group of people and make an announcement on behalf of Brattleboro's Charter Revision Commission. We're a six-member group of people who were appointed by the select board in 2022 to look at our charter. And right now, we're, in the next two weeks or so, we're going to be making a decision about our form of town meeting between RTM, Open RTM, or Open Town Meeting and Australian Ballot. We have a survey that we'd like everybody to take, which you can go on the brattleboro.gov website, to the Charter Commission page. And we're also going to be having two upcoming meetings, one on May first and one on May fifteenth, right here in the Select Board Reading Meeting Room at six fifteen. So we want as many citizens of the town of Brattleboro to be involved in the process, and we got a lot of them here tonight, so I hope you'll join in the conversation. Thank you.
Great. All right. Are we ready to move on? One, this is your second bite at the apple, you know.
So my name's Marta and I'm from Brattleboro. One thing that I've noticed, and I know that it's not exactly public safety, but it is sort of public safety, it is pretty dark downtown. There are lots of intersections that are not lit well. And in place of a light post where there should be like a cross, crossing intersection, it's at the corner of the Harmony parking lot where the, everyone's books is, there's a tree. Trees are great, but they don't help you in the dark when you can't see people trying to cross that giant space.
Thank you for your comment.
It's dark.
All right. Shall we move on to tonight's regular business, which is FY twenty-six budget redevelopment? And, you know, tonight's topic is potential service cuts to public safety. We'll explore these factors affecting safety in our town. We have experts here and town staff, and then we'll have a public comment and then a select board discussion. But let's, let's ask our town manager, John Potter, to kick it off.
Okay, so, thank you, Liz. I'll provide a little bit of background and context, and this, item, as Liz mentioned, is to discuss, discuss possible service reductions in police. We'll talk about police first and then pivot to the fire department. I have several folks here tonight to help me introduce the context and some of the background around talking about public safety in Brattleboro. But, you know, really, I'm also hopeful to highlight some of the really innovative and progressive approaches that have been going on in Brattleboro, which some people may be aware of and others may not know about them. And so I want to make sure that we mention some of the incredible and innovative steps that have been, being taken to, to make it nicer when you're walking around on a beautiful afternoon like today and, and you're not seeing lots, lots of things that really make you sad, but instead, you're, you're walking around Brattleboro and you, you, you see, you see a town that you can be proud of and a place that you want to be. So beginning in 2022, a lot of community members started attending select board meetings and they came to discuss public safety issues in town, and especially regarding the downtown area. This, these concerns that people were bringing to the select board centered around the Brattleboro Transportation Center, they related to a lot of break-ins that were happening, a lot of observations about open drug use in town, perceptions about downtown deteriorating, and so much so that people felt like people were choosing not to come to Brattleboro anymore when in the past they did. We had leadership from the Brattleboro Boys and Girls Club and the Youth Theater come to talk with the select board and talk about their fears about having youth in our downtown and that they were hearing from parents that they didn't want their children walking around downtown after they had visited their establishments, particularly on Flat Street. Then this kind of continued on into 2023, and still lots of conversations at select board meetings about public safety, about public restrooms, that was a big topic early in 2023. At that time, the select board chose not to pursue public restrooms downtown. But, you know, that was an ongoing conversation, has since been addressed. In May of 2023, the, there was a discussion at the select board level about hiring private security personnel unarmed for the transportation center and other municipal buildings around town to help police with their workload. And in June, the town contracted with Secure Task to provide unarmed private security downtown. That was really helpful, and there were several updates through 2023 and into 2024 about how that was going. And the guards had a positive effect when they were there, but the company could not always send the number of people, of personnel that, that they, that they were contracted to because of their inability to hire and retain staff. Kind of coming in the middle of all that, the select board asked Police Chief Norma Hardy and Assistant Police Chief Jeremy Evans to formulate a downtown safety action plan to help turn things around in the downtown. And they came up with, they came up with an approach that Chief Hardy will talk about in a minute. Some other things that happened in the public safety space were that the town worked with several partners, including the Downtown Brattleboro Alliance, the Chamber of Commerce and Groundworks, to put together a downtown safety fair. There was a first one in 2023 and a second one in 2024, and possibly another one again this year. That was an opportunity for people to come together and talk about safety concerns that they had in Brattleboro. Around that time, the, the Department of Public Safety took an interest in helping out Brattleboro, and they brought a wonderful resource to the town, and that was Jim Baker. And Jim Baker came on behalf of the Public Safety Enhancement Team and, and did some assessments in Brattleboro, put together a, a great conference that people from all over the community came to and talked about public safety and what, all that was happening. And the town has worked closely with Jim and, and the Public Safety Enhancement Team In December of, let's see, no, in September of 2024, the select board was, was hearing, well, really, from August, really July, August and into September, the select board meetings looked like they do tonight. There were literally over a hundred and fifty people at consecutive meetings demanding that the select board do something about, about, about what was happening in the downtown area. And the select board heard all of this and they, and that's when they asked Chief Hardy to come up with a downtown safety action plan, which she presented and the board funded in late September. That, that was, that was a, a plan that the select board at the time knew there was, it was unbudgeted. There was nothing in the fiscal twenty-five budget to, to do, to take an approach on downtown safety. But they found that it was such a concern of the community that it needed to be addressed. It needed to be addressed immediately because of the long lead times that the police require to get, to get trained personnel in, in place to, to help out a situation. So they authorized the downtown safety action plan to move forward with the knowledge that it would then come to representative town meeting as a budget item in, in the budget. So that's kind of where we are now, that went to the town meeting and they, they didn't like the budget. Some people maybe for that reason, maybe some people for others. But the, the focus of the select board in September of last year was really, is there something that we can do to get ahead of summer, of this summer, summer of 2025? And that's why they, they felt the need to act immediately. So I guess part of, part of all of this public safety concern, I think there is some relationship with state programs that are happening in our town, such as the motel program. I think we may hear a little bit about that. But I, I do want to turn things over right now to Assistant Chief Evans to present us with some additional data that the police department has been analyzing regarding calls in town and regarding what the situation is and how the police have been responding to the many concerns that, that community members have had. And so I'll invite Assistant Chief Evans and Chief Hardy to the table. And Liz, after, after we get set up here and we hear initially from Assistant Chief Evans, I have a statement that State's Attorney, Steve Brown, has asked me to read into the record, so.
Very good, John. Thank you. Good evening, Jeremy.
Good evening.
Assistant Chief, Chief Hardy, thank you for coming.
Thanks for having us.
Thanks for having us.
Please begin.
Okay, so Seth, I'll tell you whenever I want you to flip slides. So tonight, we're gonna, but first of all, thanks for, thanks for everyone showing up. This is fantastic to see the amount of people that are here that are actually concerned about public safety in town. That warms my heart. I appreciate it. Tonight, we're going to present on some of the, the primary trends that we saw that caused us to expand services provided by the police department in the interest of time and- time and kind of with the understanding that more data doesn't necessarily make a better presentation, sometimes just makes things more confusing or too long. We've tried to just highlight some of the more significant drivers that we had that caused this to happen for us. So, uh, we'll also be presenting on some of the ways that we've been working to minimize chaos and identify how to best deploy our resources throughout town, not just downtown. Over the course of our presentation, you're gonna see a fair amount of data. I didn't say Simon says yet. Over the course of our presentation, you're gonna see a fair amount of data. Uh, we're presenting it to help show trends and activity, uh, that have driven the need for, to, for us to expand our services. Um, it's not being presented at any point to point fingers at people or accuse different programs, state or otherwise, of causing a problem. Definitely don't want it taken that way. We're looking at this, like, globally, um, on how we can best serve our community. And in fact, we have really good, strong collaborative relationships with many of those organizations. Uh, some of them are here tonight. We really appreciate that. Next slide. So, uh, to start off, we're gonna talk about two things that have driven a population move in town here. And one of them is the point in time count for homelessness in Vermont, um, and the second is our hotel program. Next slide, Seth. So the, the point in time count, if you don't know what that is, um, I've learned about it over the past year myself. Um, it's an annual count of those experiencing literal homelessness throughout Vermont and actually throughout the country, but we're here just talking about Wyndham County, Vermont. So they define, for the program, they define homelessness as living in a place not meant for human habitation, like a tent or vehicle, or an emergency shelter, transitional housing, or a hotel paid for by the government or another charitable organization. Seth? So we looked at a, a ten-year, uh, data set, mostly because of COVID. COVID messes everything up when you're looking at data. Um, so we wanted to look at before and after and see how things trended. So for Wyndham County, as you can see, our trend was up a lot. We moved up three hundred percent in our, in our count, uh, over that ten-year period, which was a hundred and thirteen, uh, in 2015 and in 2024 was four hundred and fifty-two So as part of that, you can see the different breakdown by county. It's a little small on the slide, but there's a, there's a better graph for it afterwards, I apologize, that just shows you the, the percentage breakdowns from 2015. If you look, we had about seven percent. If you go by the count for homeless population here in, uh, the homeless population of Vermont here in Wyndham County, um, and by 2024, we had, uh, kind of moved to thirteen percent. Next slide. Um, so what's interesting is the percent change throughout that ten-year period. So, uh, there was three counties that went down significantly in their count for homelessness over that ten-year period, um, and three counties that went up significantly during that same period. And unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you look at it, we're one of those counties that went up significantly during that timeframe. So part of that, our hotel program. The hotel program obviously expanded during COVID and has stayed pretty, uh, pretty expanded through now. And we took out the last ten years' worth of data on, uh, most of the hotels in town. And you can see back in 2015, this is all the calls we went to for the year at various hotels in town. So Quality Inn, for example, it's at the top there, 2015, we went there twenty-six times in one year, the entire year we went there twenty-six times. Um, starting in 2020, that jumped exceptionally high, um, and has continued to climb. Last year, we were there three hundred and five times. So you can see the change with some of the hotels there. Uh, some of them have stayed the same, some of those are not, uh, really engaged in the program, or if they are, it's a very small amount. Others have taken it on full boat. So we have that, that data set for you. Uh, the one thing I will say out of that, I'm sorry the slide didn't, uh, come up on the screen perfect, but the numbers for the Hampton Inn are inflated because their parking lot of butts at the Quality Inn and the vast majority of their calls were actually related to activities occurring at the Quality Inn. So you have that. Uh, next slide. So what we did is we went back over 2024 and we said, uh, we went to, we analyzed every single call we went to at those hotels, at the top four there, the Quality Inn, the Travelodge, Conne Lodge and Coverbridge Inn. We analyzed every call we went to and every person we interacted with on those calls. And then we went back through our data, uh, through the state databases because a lot of these people are high users of emergency services. So there's a lot of connection points with them and law enforcement throughout the state. And we found that eighty-five percent of those people that are in the hotels aren't from town. They've come here from other towns, two hundred and ninety-five of them, um, and from out of state, a hundred and forty of them, that have come here for, in the hotel program. Next slide. So with the town mayor's office help, we looked at some estimated cost breakdowns on what that might be costing, uh, the town for emergency services. So the breakdown here we have is by ho- by hotel, um, but the totals, you can see at the bottom where we're, the total estimated for FY26 costs is around six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars just for police and fire responses to these locations.
Great, thank you, Chief. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, uh, read this statement that, uh, State's Attorney Brown asked me to read into the record, if that's okay with the chair?
Sure.
And, um, maybe while, uh, while I'm doing that, uh, I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Baker and Mr. Allen to, uh, come up and, um, speak with us after I'm done with, with this. Uh, so this is the, the letter that I had from, um, Attorney Brown. "Good evening. As the Wyndham County State's Attorney, one of my top priorities is ensuring the safety of this community. The town is facing a decision as to how to fund the Brattleboro Police Department. As a prosecutor in Wyndham County for over seventeen years, I have a front row seat on the challenges facing this community. For many years, the department was plagued with chronic staffing shortages and low morale. Under Chief Hardy's leadership, there's been a seismic shift in the culture at the police department. The police department is using innovative and forward-thinking initiatives to drive down crime and to address the pressing public safety demands in the field. These initiatives allow police to connect citizens to necessary services and to deliver people to treatment. They enforce the laws with compassion and empathy and they treat people with respect and dignity. The town had, has the opportunity to build on the chief's tireless work. Brattleboro is now facing new and growing challenges that require the town to fully fund the chief's proposed budget and to allow the department to continue to do the great work they are doing. I'd like to highlight two challenges the town is facing, which are real and pervasive: the use of a motel to house hundreds of people and the violent crime that has wreaked havoc and caused chaos in the town. There's been much debate about the state's motel program, the role it should or should not play in solving the housing shortage we all know exists. I am not here to offer any opinions about the state's choice to house people in our local motels. However, the motel program requires the town to expend a significant amount of resources. The motel program is an unfunded mandate on the municipality. It's causing unprecedented consequences and pressures on the limited resources that are available in Brattleboro. Police spend a disproportionate amount of their time responding to calls at the motels. For example, the Brattleboro Police responded to over three hundred calls at one motel this past year compared to just twenty-five in the year prior to 2020 and 2019. The town has not been provided with any compensation to offset this drastic increase in call volume. The calls just don't end when the officers drive out of the parking lot. Many of these calls result in arrests and generate criminal court cases that pose further burdens on the criminal justice system and require further outlay of tax dollars out of the town's budget. Brattleboro has seen an extraordinarily high level of violent crime in the last couple of years. For example, in the last three years, there have been six homicides compared to the same number of homicides in the previous twenty years in Brattleboro. Combating violent crime should be a top priority for this select board and the members of RTM. It is imperative that the town fund the department to a level that allows it to fulfill its mandate to the public. The emergency our community is facing is real and you can turn the tide. You can take control of a situation that could easily tear Brattleboro apart. A fully funded police force that provides them with the necessary tools is the least we can do to protect the people who live and visit our community. Thank you, Stephen Brown."
Thank you, John.
So, uh, Steve couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to, uh, read that to the board, uh, for your information on considering these, uh, service reductions. One thing I wanted to touch on, and I invited Mr. Baker and Mr. Allen here to, um, help also inform you about, it's not just the downtown safety action plan and the efforts of the police department that have been happening in this town. And with their help, particularly in several areas, um, we have been looking at other innovative ways to work collaboratively across all of the service sectors in Brattleboro to hopefully drive down the need for a downtown safety action plan and the need for law enforcement over the long run. And so I'd, I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Baker to, um, explain a little bit about, about, uh, your perce- perceptions of Brattleboro and, um, how you've supported us in, in finding different pathways to, uh, to hopefully success.
Yeah, thank you, uh, John, for the invite. And, uh, by the way of introduction, uh, my name is Jim Baker. Um, for the last two and a half plus or minus years, uh, I've been the consultant to Governor Phil Scott's Public Safety Enhancement Team. Uh, in the summer of 2022, uh, Governor Scott challenged his leadership team to take a look at ways to try to impact what was then, and in some places in the state continues to be, an increase in violent crime, um, that's driven by a whole host of different issues, um, in a lot of ways primarily substance use disorder challenges, uh, in, in the state. And what the governor did was challenge his leadership team to take a look at the model that was used during the pandemic. Um, Vermont was one of the leaders in the country in using data to drive decision-making during the pandemic. Um, I had a front row seat for that at the time. I was the interim commissioner of corrections, uh, during the pandemic and, uh, had a front row seat to understand how we use that data to be one of the only states in the country not to lose a staff member or an incarcerated individual to the virus. Some of that was pure luck, but a lot of it was a result of decision-making that was done as a result of data that we were, we were doing every day, to include, um, predictive modeling, um, based on, um, community spread. The governor challenged people to take a look at the way that data was used and his leadership team started over the summer of 2022 to take a look at calls for police services across the spectrum in the state. Vermont's very unique in that most police departments use the same database, Dalcore, to, uh, as a records management system. And as a result of that, uh, the digital services staff of state government started taking a look at calls for service across the state, in particular areas that were indicative, indicative of, of, um, mental health challenges, substance use disorder and the related violence that came along with some of the illegal drug trafficking that was going on in the state. And as a result of that, um, eight to ten communities were identified in the state as outliers and Brattleboro was one of those communities that was identified as an outlier. In, in the fall of twenty-two, um, I started working with the Public Safety Enhancement Team to identify the communities in a process that we would go through to approach, uh, a community, to offer resources from the state. The focus really was on trying to figure out ways to build, uh, shared consciousness in a community, on how to approach their individual challenges, along with, uh, building trust amongst partners that worked in the space where public safety and public health met. And that's not always easy to do because of competing priorities between elements in the public safety realm and elements in the public health realm. And when I talk about public health, I may not be using the right term that people are familiar with. I'm talking about, uh, mental health, substance use disorder, homelessness and the challenges that came as a result of the post, post-pandemic conditions that we found in the state. We started working in communities, um, to date, we worked, we have worked in Bennetton, Springfield, Rowland and Brattleboro. Um, I started working here in the community, uh, in the fall of twenty-three, as I started, um, coming to understand the challenges that we're facing Brattleboro. When it came to public safety and as Assistant Chief Evans talked about, calls for service that were driving, um, fear and making people uneasy and making people sad, and, um, started taking a look at that data. And what became really apparent here, and now that we've had two and a half years of looking at data across the state, this is gonna come as a shock to a lot of folks, maybe or maybe not, that the majority of incidents that are happening in communities are being driven by a small number of people. And out of those small number of people that are driving the overuse of the systems, um, many, many of them have nothing to do with the criminal justice system. It's focused on the public health system. And so as we started working here in Brattleboro, um, as, as John had said, I started understanding what resources were in the community. Many of you in this room, I met with countless times to talk about what resources were in the community and how could we force multiply to bring better results for the community. And that work started in the fall of twenty-three and then I believe it was April thirtieth of twenty-four, uh, we held a symposium where, uh, uh, different organizations, both from the public safety realm and the public health room, uh, realm spent a day together, really taking an inventory about what was going on in the community and how could we better force multiply and bring resources together. It, it was obvious to me from the work that I did here that there are a lot of resources in the community, but they were all, always not coordinated. And I don't want to get ahead of myself because Scott's gonna talk about, um, the training we did here a few months back on Situation Table, training. But it was, it was obvious that, um, resources were working hard in the community, they were focused on their area of expertise and there may not have been a cross-pollination of how best to use resources collectively in a shared consciousness approach of how you are going to affect the harm being done to the community, but also the individuals that were involved in the high number of calls for service to the police department. There was a lot of self-harm going on that required EMS services, police calls for services. So the challenge was coming out of that symposium in April of twenty-four, uh, to create an overhead management team, which morphed into One Brattleboro, which I believe John is still meeting to this day, from leaderships from various organizations. And I often use this as an example when I talk about Brattleboro. There was somewhere between five, six, seven different organizations doing outreach in the community that were not talking to each other. And it was one small example of where we thought we could help build that. The other areas we supported the town and particularly the police department was helping them better understand the data that the Assistant Chief talked about. Um, we provided resources and, and assets to them, technical assistance. We, we assisted them in securing grant money to embed, uh, uh, additional social workers inside the police department, um, on, on a contract with HCRS. And, um, we also provided, um, the expertise of Scott, who's gonna talk in, in a few minutes about the training that was done. And so, uh, coming out of that, um, I, I believe that, um, there is a much better coordination of resources now, led by the police department. Um, I know there's a lot of conversation in the space around public safety and public health, but during the course of the last two and a half years, as part of the Public Safety Enhancement Team, we've engaged some of the leading researchers in the country Enhancement Team, we've engaged some of the leading researchers in the country in the area of criminology and public health to validate the work that we're doing. And one of the things that stands out in all the communities we're working in is the model around, a model around where you're doing outreach work cross section across the various organizations that have a better impact at doing interventions into individuals who are in harm's way, who may in turn be causing harm to the community. The approach is not a criminal justice approach. Their approach is more now a public health approach, because the folks that are overutilizing the system are in need of those resources, not resources that the criminal justice system provide. And John, just out of the spirit of time, I'm going to stop there.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. And we've also invited Scott Allen here, who is from the Cordada Company. And Scott has trained all of the folks in Brattleboro and then continues to support us. And I just want to, before you get going, and I go, you got your slides up here, good. I just want to say how grateful we are for the support from your team and from the Department of Public Safety and your team, Jim. It's really been just, I can't say enough about how great this has been to help us with this huge problem that we're facing with public safety. So thank you for being here, Scott.
John, one thing I would say before Scott, to that point, the folks that we have dealt with in this community are dedicated, hardworking folks that are trying to find innovative solutions to get to the root causes of the kind of chaos that occurs in the community. And I don't want to minimize Chief Hardy's role in this at all, that from day one, the reception we got, no one ever said to us, that's a bad idea. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Jim. And thank you, Mr. Potter, Chair and Select Board, Chief Hardy, Assistant Chief Evans, and the Brattleboro residents. If you can't tell, I'm not from Vermont. You have the subtitles up there, so my Boston accent might be a little bit hard for you to understand. By way of background, I spent 26 years in law enforcement in a community called East Bridgewater, Mass., not dissimilar to this town. 15,000 residents, that's the city of Brockton, city of Brockton, about 120,000 residents, lot of challenges and problems. I come by way of background, I was a drug cop. If you told me 30 years ago today, I'd be doing this community health, public health work, I'd say you were crazy in 1994. But I embraced it in my own community, because we had a one Brattleboro, it was called EB Hope. It was started by a mother who sent letters to everyone, to the governor, down to the chief of police in my community, saying, I need help for my son and my family, we suffer from opioid use disorder. And my boss was the only one to answer those letters. So I'd been there at the front lines as a detective sergeant. I helped launch a drop-in center in my community, the local church. We had 1,100 people come through our doors. On a regional basis, we shared it within five towns in the city of Brockton being one of them. So I come with you to that background, just to give you a kind of later framework, because this community is the community that I was in, that I was a police officer, and I was the chief of police for four years from 2016 to 2020. And my work in this space was to create this model that was co-response, as Jim was saying, police, persons with lived experience, public health clinicians, all working together to engage vulnerable populations, persons suffering from substance use disorder, mental disorders, drug endangered, drug exposed children. So the idea is that we bridge all these gaps in public safety. I helped with another police chief in Plymouth, Mass., my partner Mike Bautier, we've got a countywide model called Plymouth County Outreach. I'm proud to say it's 10 years in the making right now and still operating with an entire civilian staff, but it's embedded within police departments, public safety, public health, and community groups working together. When we launched that initiative, it was because of the overdose crisis, but we quickly learned it couldn't just be about substance use issues, because we were encountering all of these other community health issues. So it became what I call this community health approach. I had an outreach team very much like Chief Hardy and Chief Evans have created, with Sergeant Lynn and the team getting out there, working with their community. When we started doing that, we learned about the Situation Table. The first Situation Table was in Chelsea, Massachusetts in 2015, and it was around the time we were doing our work in Plymouth County. And we said, that's the 2.0 version of what we want to do in our county and my community. Because in our community, you had overdose, and then we'd go out the next day and try to engage and help you, but you almost had to die. So we needed to get upstream and connect based off of our shared community knowledge through the table. And that's what the table does. The model started in Canor in 2011. There's 160 tables across the United States. There's now about 40 in the U.S. There's four in Vermont. And I'm proud to say that Brattleboro, Springfield, Bennington, and help me, Jim Rutland, just launched last week, are, they are huge successes. I was fortunate enough to spend two days in December with my team and with Chief Hardy and Chief Evans hosting us. Our fire chief, your fire chief, Chief Simmons, was gracious enough to host us in that training. We had 70 people from your community, community partners, that, as Jim said, didn't always work together because we're in different spaces. I'm a cop. I'm not a behavioral health expert, but I found the behavioral health experts and said, come along with me, help me to help my residents. And that's what your community is doing, and that's what the table does. So the table is a process that looks upstream at individuals, families in need, as well as locations. So when we talk about super high frequency used locations, those are the ones, and those people that we want to engage, in lieu of arrest, to connecting to treatment and care and resources. And that's the hope and the goal. When we launched our model in Plymouth County, we were funded by our hospital. The hospital staffed us because they knew the volume at their EDs, the emergency departments, was so overwhelming, they needed help. So they needed us to get upstream with our community collaboration. And again, I've done hundreds of trainings across the country over the last five years, and I can tell you, Vermont is at the front of the curve nationally. We host a quarterly convening nationally. We've got tables from Oregon, Corvallis, Oregon, to Massachusetts, there are about 20 of them now, to now the four in Vermont. And I can tell you, Springfield and Brattleboro going neck and neck each week, it's like, okay, because the community has come together. And that's what this process does. It's to help individuals before a crisis happens. And I just can't say enough about your public safety leadership in this community. I mean, they opened us, I'm an outsider, and you know, as a chief of police, when an outsider comes in, a lot of times we want to close the doors, but they say, come on in, because we're doing a lot of great stuff, but we need to learn more. And now I can, I love to say that Brattleboro is at the head of the curve, and we're really looking forward to the next iteration. I've got a couple of slides, and Allah, Chief Evans, I kind of hit on that. I got introduced to Jim through the Vermont P set. And again, those four sites we started with, you are the four pilot sites. I'm happy to say that it looks like we're going to do four more in 2025 through the Vermont P set, and we're hoping to, you know, take this model across the state. I heard the chief talk about that crossover jurisdiction. We saw it in my community. I would have someone 25 miles away in my community that had social health issues. Because we had this collaboration across the county, we were able to help one another support those individuals. Again, Brattleboro's table has been recognized nationally. If you want to scroll through that, the next slide, you know, the police department has used their front row seat with their fire partners to look at those frequent calls for service, and then how do we get upstream? Chief Evans hosts every other week the BRATSTAT, and it's an incredible collaboration that we've now built the table on top of. So after the BRATSTAT meeting every other week, the table meets every week, and again, it's looking, how can we help our community residents? How can we look at those locations that are having frequent calls so we can reduce these? And as Jim said, I am proud to say, one of our tables in the Panhandle Health District in Nebraska, we trained about four years ago. And again, they're health district led with law enforcement, community partners. They are now a best practice, as recognized by the National Association of City and County Health Organizations. So this has been peer reviewed, the model up in Canada has been published on for years now. And again, it is a model that works. It's not a program, it's a different way of community collaboration. And really, I like to say it's like the magic of the table. I see it each week as we mentor and sit in and watch. You can see persons say, hey, I knew your name and your face, but I didn't know what you did. How do we do this together? And that's what happens through this process. If you want to scroll through, I'll show some highlights, and I'll be quiet, because I do talk a lot, Jim. You know, early results, I know it's hard to see there, and it talks about the BRATSTAT, how, you know, the teams have engaged across the community. If you want to go to the next one, I think it'll be easier to read. I am now at the age, I cannot read, Jim. Your top seven risk factors, as I can tell you right now, is homelessness. We see that across the country. That's almost always number one. Number two, are mental health disorders typically. Substance use is usually within that top five, but basic needs, social determinant health needs, housing, a job, workforce development, support for those family members and loved ones. That's what the table does as a community collaboration. And I can tell you, I've been in about 30 of the 50 states now, and you've got some incredible resources, as I heard earlier, it's just a more efficient way of working together. If you want to go to the next slide, this talks about where the agencies are bringing forward situations. The police is leading a lot of those, which we see early on. Once the table establishes itself, and you're about seven weeks in, it starts to spread out, and we can always see that happening in Brattleboro, where other partners are now coming forward saying, hey, I have an individual family that needs help. Who at this table haven't I connected with to help that individual family? If you want to go to the next one, it talks about the assisting agencies, and it's pretty, it's pretty spread across. We've got police, fire, we've got Turning Point, Groundworks, HCRS, you've got your hospital that is part of a lot of these engagements, which is huge. Because again, as a police chief, I did not want someone that had behavioral health issues in my jail cell. I didn't want them to have to go to court. I didn't want to have to go to the ER. This is what does it upstream. And again, that's coming from a drug cop that spent 20 some odd years, you know, putting people in jail, but it was my community partners that changed my perception. When I tell you I went from Sergeant Allen, you're going to, you're in trouble, versus Sergeant Allen knocking on the door with a person with lived experience, who is my partner in EB Hope, but he was someone that I arrested 20 some odd years early and chased around. Now him and I are knocking on doors, and I can tell you, every time these officers knock on doors, they don't get turned away, because the community embraces them. So again, I just, I probably talked too much, but I just want to give you a clear picture of the table.
That's great. That's great, Scott. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to say again, just how much we appreciate everything that you're doing, because we know that even though we may have to make an investment today, that the promise of what you have given to us will help us drive that down in the future.
And on that, I'll just say, John, real quickly, what we have studied now is we're seeing calls for service reduced when we have these community collaborations. There's a study out of one of our Ohio partners. The first engagement with one person, there's a $17,000 savings on the healthcare side only, not even public safety, we're studying that next. The second engagement with the same person, it jumps to $41,000. The third time with the same person, so it shows us what? We need to continue to engage vulnerable populations. It's the right thing to do, but sometimes we have to talk about budgets, right? And to be able to do this work, it is going to save you money. You will see your calls for service decline. It did happen in my community. We're always starting to see it organically in Brattleboro.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both for being here. I'm going to invite Chief Hardy to come back, and we'll wrap up this conversation, putting the context around what the police department services are that we provide in the community. And in your backup materials, you'll see that we have broken out 39 services that the police department provides, and also developed estimated personnel costs by each municipal service. And Chief Hardy is going to give you some more background that's necessary when considering the possibility of any service reductions on these 39 services across town, and she'll be available to also answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, John. Yeah, so I won't go, I won't go into the timeline so much as because you already covered that in reading about how we started and how these things came about, and how the safety action plan was developed, you know, and you already spoke about the fact that we had the residents and business owners that would come to select board and be very vocal, but it, you know, it still doesn't give, it doesn't compare to tell how vocal people were at my office, and how people were calling my phone, and how I would come in in the morning and have so many calls that I had to answer, because I do answer my own phone calls. And so I had to answer so many messages of people that were leaving me messages about these kinds of things that were going on. And it didn't just cover the downtown area, it was all over town. But what we found was that we were having to give so many resources to the things that were happening over the years in the downtown area. So particularly if you bring up the trends, yeah. So we wanted to just have a visual, because me talking about all of these things constantly, I think sometimes we just need visuals, and people can actually see what I'm actually talking about. And you can see that we were having burglaries. I know that some individuals that are in this room were victimized by these burglaries that we were having at properties. And so from the time from 2022, you can see that we were having quite a bit of burglaries happening. And as we started to put more resources in the downtown area, because we were getting a lot of burglaries in the stores, a lot of broken windows, a lot of broken doors, people's equipment was stolen, work tools, a lot of tools were stolen numerous times, and we started to see that it was really a certain group of people. It wasn't like these were just people that were coming here and doing the burglaries. We were getting the same people, we kept getting the same people on video. And so we started to address that by trying to have more coverage in the areas where we had the higher burglaries. So if you can see from 2022, when we had 100, over 100 burglaries, by 2024, when we started staffing up the department, you can see that we had a big decline in it. We were able to arrest the individuals. Some of them are still in jail, because they committed so many burglaries in this town alone, that they're still in jail for that behavior. And we also saw the stores were being hit with a lot of thefts, laws on these thefts, people were walking in stores, walking out. We talked to some of the business owners that were dealing with having to try to stop people, and having people just basically push them out of the way and take their property outside of their businesses. And as we grew the department, we also were able to do arrests on warrants, because Brattleboro PD, when I got here in 2021, was so decimated, you only had 13 officers, that you were supposed to have 27 officers. And so, you know, we didn't, we didn't double the police department. We filled the empty places that you had in your police department. And the fact that you had any police left, when I got here, I will tell you that Brattleboro was very close to not having a police department, because everyone was so overworked and so tired and weren't able to take any days off, and they kept, and I applaud every single one of them for staying here and trying to hold down the fort and fight the crimes that they were seeing starting to grow here. It's like, so hot. So what I want to do is show, in case people are not realizing, like, when I talk about that it's not just the downtown area, like I said, I wanted to have some visuals to show you what your police department is doing, what your police department has been doing to try to protect the town. You know, we're not just downtown. The downtown safety action plan is so that I can have resources for the other places in town. And I think that a lot of times, people don't really accept that there's a drug problem in Brattleboro, not that there's a drug use problem in Brattleboro, that there's a drug dealing problem in Brattleboro. And so therefore, we address that. And when I have the resources, I can address that. So we make a point of going out to places where we know we can go and get these drug dealers off the street. And so I brought some slides to show you just how much drugs comes through Brattleboro, because I've heard people say, why do you need so many police in a town of 12,000 people? Well, we have way more people than 12,000 people during the day, when people are coming in and out of the town on weekends for special events, for protests, for all of that, you have way more people. But the problem being that what we have is a very, very lucrative, very lucrative drug dealing areas in Brattleboro. We have a very lucrative drug trade in Brattleboro. And so it's no deterrent for people to leave, because we arrest the same people numerous times, until we finally, finally, finally get a case where we can make them stay in jail. And so when they are terrorizing the community, they are killing members of this community, and they are responsible. When I call them terrorists, they are terrorists, and they are murderous. And we are only touching just a little part of what's going on in this town. There are very vicious acts that are happening in Brattleboro that, you know, everyone would like, I would love to be here and not have to say this, I know it's not a popular thing for me to say, but I think it's a reality check for some, that you have very, very vicious people here that are hurting people. They're hurting people every single day, okay? And this is one way is that they're hurting people, by selling this amount of drugs. This was in one place, in one hotel, on one drug rate, and we had this much fentanyl, okay? And if anyone knows anything about fentanyl, you know that it just takes this very little to kill one person. And this is just from one place, and the person that we arrested was from New York. So they are making the trip to Brattleboro to set up their businesses and their shops and make a lot of money. Next slide, so. This is Quality Inn. Here we go again, another person not from Brattleboro that came here to conduct business, okay? And this is going into pills, oxycodone. And I know I don't have to give anybody any lessons on the dangers of oxy, but it's a lucrative, it's a lucrative business here, that people will come here and sell it. And next slide, so. Black Mountain Inn, another hotel that we go to, where we had, not only we got drugs from that bust, but we also got someone that assaulted someone and basically pistol whipped them. And we got this amount of drugs just from running to that car, actually. And these people were from Hartford, Connecticut. And these people were from Hartford, Connecticut because Hartford, Connecticut is another place where we're seeing people come here and killing people in our community. Next slide. Quality Inn. You've heard us talk about Quality Inn numerous times? Well, this is an example of something that's going on in one room in Quality Inn. One room, one person had twelve thousand dollars of cash and over five hundred bags of fentanyl. That is a lot of death right there in that one room by those people that came here. And this person was from Brattleboro, so this person wasn't even a big dealer. This person was dealing for someone else, we believe, within Brattleboro. But this is to show you the magnitude of drugs that we get here. You know, when you want to know what your police are doing, this is what we're doing. While we're not running downtown to take care of all the other calls that we have to address, we are in town trying to get these kind of matters under hand. Next slide, Seth. Comfort Inn. This is another one. These people were from Brattleboro, okay? Over a thousand bags of fentanyl, over a thousand bags of fentanyl in one hotel room. And that's when we can get into the hotel rooms, okay? So one hotel room, and that's what we got here in Brattleboro, all right? So like I said, I like to put out the facts. I like to tell the community what's happening. I've been talking about this since I've been here. I've been trying to tell people what's happening in Brattleboro. I've been trying to show the thread, the trends that we've seen, the mass destruction of human life that we've seen here, and this is what's going on. So now everybody can get to see what we've actually been up to or what we've been doing. We're not just talking. We're not just taking care of the businesses downtown. We are take, trying to take care of everyone in this community and keep them safe, particularly our people that are being victimized by these individuals. Next slide, Seth. And here we go with Elliott Street, right? And Elliott Street, not only did we arrest these individuals that, you know, they were, they were from all over. It was just a whole group of people there. But if you notice a trend, you see Connecticut is a big one. We have Connecticut, some of Keene, other Vermont towns, and Brattleboro, okay? And this one particularly, this was a very dangerous warrant that we served. I actually was on this warrant with my, with my people and this was a very dangerous warrant, I will say. Next slide. So we're showing you this because we started a program where we would come twice a week to downtown because people were talking about how children going to the Boys and Girls Club were walking over needles. There was trash, there was bottles. So me and my, my staff would go down and we'd walk around downtown. We walk around through the Preston lot, we walk through the parking lots, and we witnessed this. And I witnessed kids leaving from the Boys and Girls Club and walking and having to step over not only needles, bottles, people hanging out, people drinking, but people sleeping. So what we started to do with our DPW is we said, let's have a trash pickup day. And then we were accused of taking people's personal property. We do not take people's personal property. We take trash. If we think that something may be someone's personal property, we look in. And that's why we're showing you this. This was someone's suitcase. So we looked in, see if it's anything there that the person needs. And then the town, DPW, will hold people's property for two weeks for them to come and get it. And every person that works on any of the outreach teams is aware of that and they can let the person know to go and get their, their property. We don't just throw people's property out, okay? Next slide, please. And here we are with one of the reasons that parents were calling my phone. And parents were calling my phone because their children were walking past this activity while they were going to Boys and Girls Club, while they were going to the theater, the children's theater, while they were waiting for the mover. So that's one of the reasons that we developed this plan. Next slide, Seth. So another thing that I want to talk about, and I want to have Captain Petlock and Justin Johnston come up quickly to explain some of the things that Justin does. So one of the things that I wanted to show you is how us having the resources and the police officers to respond to these overdoses has also helped us save people because we're there faster. So we're there to give them Narcan and we're able to save them. So you'll see the numbers in deaths start to decrease, okay? And that's why I want Justin to come up because Justin Johnston is one of the innovations that I'm so proud of for us to have been able to put in place. Justin, we'll tell him about Justin. I don't talk about Justin unless I have his permission to do so. But I do believe that this young man has shown what can be accomplished by someone who they can, can do all the things and cross all those Ts and get their life together and be able to come and be such a great part of the community and offer so much service for the community. I'm very proud of my department for, we, you know, we did, we went through a lot to be able to hire Justin to come to the Police Department. And I have not regretted one day of it. And I'll let Justin, Justin, come up and talk about what you do with the department, please.
What an introduction. Thanks, Chief.
Yeah. Sit.
Can I see how it fits me? Who's doing slides? So good evening, everyone. I'm Justin Johnston and this is?
Adam Petlock.
I am the Community Resource Specialist here with the Brattleboro Police Department. I've been a part of Project Care since its inception in two thousand and eighteen. I'm a person in long-term recovery and working in this community in human resources field with Turning Point Wyndham County since I, two thousand and seventeen, when I left there to join the department in October of two thousand and twenty-four. I have a lot of lived experiences. I often joke and say the only perfect score I've ever had is my adverse childhood experience score. Not a good thing. You want a zero on that. Not a perfect score. I've experienced being unhoused, incarceration in several states, a single parent home, poverty, as well as other, other things, yes. So Project Care, CARE stands for Community Approach to Recovery Engagement. The mission is to reduce the impact of opiates. Opiate use is having on the town of Brattleboro and its residents to reduce the amount of deaths resulting in, from opiates and other substances and connect people to the supports in our community and maintain recovery. Some of the history of Project Care is it started up in two thousand and, actually, that's an error. Fourth of July, two thousand and seventeen. There were twelve overdoses within a twenty-four hour period that the Brattleboro Police Department had responded to. And from there, the Police Department had recognized that we're not going to arrest our way out of this and why are we waiting to connect with people after an overdose? What can we do to intervene much quicker and try to connect people to resources, build relationships, and hopefully find people the support they need prior to an overdose happening? In two thousand and eighteen, whenever it was created, it was modeled after the Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative as well as the Plinnes County Outreach Program en masse that had been working with PRI and modeling community policing and what this program might look like. So from there, the Brattleboro Police Department formed a coalition and a part of that coalition included Turning Point Wyndham County, Brattleboro Retreat, Brattleboro Moral Hospital, HCRS, Groundworks, Comprehensive Treatment Center, probation and parole, as well as several others. In two thousand and nineteen, we ended up joining the PRI, Police Assisted Addiction and Recovery Initiative. And that is kind of where the history kind of ends. The pandemic happened. There was a reduction in the police force. Calls were increased dramatically. And from there, there was a, you know, everyone recognized this need to have one person be able to dedicate to this work and be the point person for it. And that's where these folks started talking about this position and designing it, looking at models around the country to come up with what might be the most helpful to the community and where my role was created from. So during Project Care's evolution, a lot of the initial focuses were on outreach. Again, getting to people before the overdose happened. At that time, there were some outreach efforts in the community, but not the amount that we see today. In a recent Project Care meeting, it was, a lot of the, the group members had really brought up that Project Care was one of the first initiatives to really get us out on the streets as much as we are today. And another focus being the overdose follow-ups, trying to engage with folks, connect people to services as quickly as we could when things were identified. And focusing specifically on high-risk individuals and high-risk areas of kind of a targeted outreach approach. It was also a big focus to form better relationships with treatment providers and not just within our community, but within the state. So if we had somebody that needed to get to treatment today, then, you know, an extra call might be able to, you know, loosen up some, a twenty-four hour or forty-eight hold on when a bed might become available. Having those relationships and getting those calls first, staying in contact with folks is a big, big help to getting people connected. And holding monthly meetings, just continuing to build trust as a community and as providers. Some of the barriers that came from that that we all recognized was transportation was a huge barrier and really the access to treatment quickly, which includes, you know, the transportation, relationships, and having identification. That can be a barrier to accessing treatment. And there was a really big barrier in, in sharing of information between agencies, not having reciprocal releases, not having complete buy-in, and everybody, you know, just sorting out what they can individually while protecting the PHI of the folks that are being served. So what my role looks like today is the Community Resource Specialist. Outreach, being present downtown at the hotels, connecting with local businesses, community members, and anywhere folks might congregate. So sometimes that might look like trying to connect folks that are our most vulnerable populations to treatment services, to, to food resources. But that also might look like helping somebody downtown who's trying to navigate the parking system. Been helped, you know, been in those situations many times, did not expect it. So I've had to learn and master the parking system. Making sure that there are referrals to support. So in my role, I am not acting in the capacity of a recovery coach. I'm not acting in the capacity of a case manager. But in practicality, what my role looks like every day is it looks like I'm doing case management work. So I often tell folks that I am playing interim case management until a long-term connection to more permanent supports could happen. I don't want to wait until those connections happen to get started on certain things. If I can do insurance today with somebody, I'm going to. If I can start filling out social security applications, I'm going to. General assistance applications, et cetera, et cetera, with the long-term goal of connecting somebody to more permanent case management and around the supports that they want. Transportation is a big part of what I do. That was one of the barriers that we all recognized and a need in our community, which was a really big part in designing this role, that transportation would be a part of that. And from my perspective, transportation takes the priority over anything. I'd be willing to walk out of this room right now if I got a call that someone needed to get to Valley Vista because that is the priority. That can be the difference of, of somebody living today or not, you know, not being here tomorrow. Overdose follow-ups and doing, creating what we call an IDV, an Identification Verification Face Sheet, which the next slide, I will show folks what that looks like. And also participating with the Situation Table. Captain Petlock is the facilitator lead and I am the data recorder lead. And we have also been doing recovery spotlights where we spotlight folks in the community in long-term recovery and share their story, just hoping to, to, to make somebody reading it hopeful that, you know, they can achieve that as well. So anybody like Simpson's? Here's Bart. This is an example of what the IDV, our Identification Verification Face Sheet, looks like. And essentially, it says through, you know, law enforcement records and professional relationships that we can verify this person's identity through such demographics. It's always going to include date of birth and a few other factors. Fun fact, that is Bart Simpson's date of birth up there, so. And sorry, let me add one more thing to that. These have been very helpful at helping can get, get people connected to resources. Sorry, to resources such as treatment centers, get people connected to Comprehensive Treatment Center here in town to start daily dosing. Also picking up medications from pharmacies. They have been accepted for that reason as well. Getting people connected to the GA program and providing ID at hotels. And most recently, a bank accepted it to help allow someone to start a bank account there. So that's pretty cool. So since I've started in October, I think the, the first month was a lot of onboarding, training, getting used to the department. But since then, I've had about two hundred and fifty tracked activities, mainly tied to the, the activities that I just outlined on the previous slide. And like I had mentioned, I'm, I'm kind of playing interim case management without being a case manager, just recognizing these needs and trying to be action-oriented to start getting things done and take the pressure off of the support systems that are going to be wrapped around these individuals. I participate in several committees and collaborations in our community, including the Community Substance Use Response Team, which does a lot of events on, we do cleanups, community cleanups, harm reduction services, educational services, just trying to create awareness and educate when, when needed to reduce the stigma of that in our community. Have done since then forty-eight overdose follow-ups and thirty-nine individual IDVs. Some of these individuals producing these forms several times for several different reasons. And so far, fourteen rides to treatment. Those are the, the rides that have, have been out of town, Burlington, Rutland, Virginia, St. Albans, which were all around treatment or getting somebody back to their requested community where they have more supports and family. And then dozens and dozens of, of local courtesy rides to the food bank, to Groundworks, to the library, just about anywhere. What this doesn't include is what it looks like when working with somebody that this, those two hundred and fifty tracked activities right now means that, that one activity might mean ten, twelve, twenty, twenty-five hours with one individual, getting these things started, reducing the harm that they're experiencing day to day until more permanent resources can be connected or they're in a spot of readiness where we can take action to meet the needs that they're identifying and accomplish some of their goals. Oh, yeah, next.
Sorry. That's where I come in.
That's where Adam comes in, yes.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to echo what Chief Hardy said, that Justin is an amazing resource to this community. Money well spent and we spent a lot of time developing this position and it's one of the smartest, most intelligent things I think this town has ever done. And he doesn't give himself enough credit for how far he's come. Justin used to, when we started Project Care in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, Justin volunteered all of his time and so did many others in the community. And we all just kind of pieced this together, used his own vehicle, which got damaged on several occasions, trying to transport people up north and didn't make any money doing it. So I think that should be appreciated amongst the community. Another thing I wanted to point out, I've been asked to get into our community outreach a little bit more and I will not bore anybody with all of the mundane statistics because I know you all want to get out of here sometime tonight. But I do want to point out that we saw a statistic earlier about the reduction in overdose deaths and we can't overlook that. That is because of all the efforts that we have made in this town through all of the collaboration that these gentlemen spoke about earlier that's happened in town. And I would add one more statistic that our officers have Narcaned approximately fifty-six people. So administered Narcan to approximately fifty-six people prior to EMS arriving. So that's not even including all of the work EMS has done. So those are fifty-six people that potentially could have been worse off had there not been some intervention. And that's because of the training that the officers received in the administration of Narcan and the training that the community has received. I just want to talk briefly, you know, I think it's super important. I just want to talk briefly, you know, I think it's super important to relate that there's been a lot of statistics thrown out there today, but all of these efforts are for naught if we don't do them all in tandem. There has to be community outreach. We are heavily involved in outreach with the schools. Me and Justin are always at the elementary schools, interacting with the kids. We feel that's super important. Our officers are at the schools every single day, the elementary schools, the high school, the middle school, some of the preschools. We have our Coffee with a Cop program. We just instituted, thanks to the Westby preschool, the Cookie with a Cop program, where we go to the preschools and we interact with the kids. We, numerous engagements, Toys for Tots, churches and synagogues in town, the Boys and Girls Club, youth theater, they're all, and I could sit here forever and talk about all the organizations we work, the Inspire School with on a regular basis, all of those and the large-scale events that we do throughout the year. You know, all I can say is that, there was a comment on social media last year, that someone made the remark after we did our National Night Out event, which was a huge success for the community, just as a positive thing for the town and the police department and public safety. And there was a comment about how does serving ice cream enhance community safety and solve all the problems we have in town? Well, it's just a piece of that. It's just a piece of that. A, it gives these poor kids in town a break and these families to think about something different for once, but it's also just a piece in this connection. So you have outreach efforts, you know, you have harm reduction efforts, when we talk about our relationship with CTC and the Methadone Clinic, all of the public service, can't talk, public service ads that we've done regarding the Good Samaritan Law, that certainly contributed to the downshift in deaths from opiates over the years. And then enforcement, you know, all of the enforcement efforts, you know, having somebody on the Southern Vermont Drug Task Force, our work with federal authorities, all of our work with other agencies like the State Police and the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department, and really targeting those who are victimizing our community. And what Project Care is, in a nutshell, is just like in our mission statement at the police department, it's separating those, like the chief said, that are coming into this community, and they're victimizing people here from Hartford, Connecticut, from Springfield, Mass, from Albany, New York, from the people that clearly need help and need that assistance. And that's why we hire Justin, that's why we get involved with the Situation Table. There's not one piece that's going to solve this. You need multiple resources. And that's why we have this Brattleboro Resource Assistance Team, to help combat all of these needs that have been brought to our attention over and over and over again. And I think there've been some successes, there've been some real successes. Justin has helped people out in this community and could sit here and tell stories, and he won't, all day about some of the people who he's improved their lives and set them up for success. And I could say the same for many others in the community, from our social workers and some of the people that work for Groundworks and HCRS and all of these other different agencies. So again, I just want to talk about all those collaborations and their importance and how important outreach is to the community.
Yeah. Thank you, Captain Petlock. I wanted to just really appreciate Chief Hardy and hopefully giving you guys a little glimpse of some of the many things that are going on in terms of services from the police department. If you, maybe if you wanted to break here, we could talk, pick up fire after whatever, however you want to handle this from here, Chair, and you'll be available to answer any questions if you have any.
Great. And the fire testimony is not as long, right? Okay. So let's take a five-minute break. When we come back, we'll hear from the fire department and then have public comment and select board comments.
I'm going to leave our most recent Recovery Spotlight at this table. If anybody would like to read it, I couldn't figure out how to throw it in the slide because it was a PDF.
You as well.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Scott.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Everyone, please take your seat. Thank you very much. All right. Well, we have the pleasure of the men in the white shirts.
We'd like to stand out in the crowd.
Is there anything you want to say that we didn't do?
No, I just offer that Chief Simons and Assistant Chief Keir are here to talk a little bit about the fire department services.
I would definitely speak up. Yeah, speak up.
And to help answer any questions that you might have about the 30-some-odd services that they provide, but also to put that into a context around things like the, like the police department, the fire department has been seeing their call volumes increase by 5% to 10% a year, and I think they're going to give a little context on that and be available to answer any questions.
Great.
Thank you. So we did not prepare hours of PowerPoint presentations. Had I known that was the expectation, I would have come more prepared. What we do have for you is just some numbers and stuff to go over. So a lot of times when we think about the fire department, we think about going and fighting fires or running ambulances into calls. Yes, we do all that, and we're doing that more, but we also do a lot of public education. We do CPR classes, we do first aid classes, we do fire extinguisher classes. So there's a lot of community engagement that we're involved with. And, you know, as we continue into the future, we want to do more of that. So we want to do more education with our children so that we prevent fires, we're kind of combating our own jobs. But there are decreasing a number of fires due to those fire prevention programs that we host. It's also our belief that everybody in the community should know CPR. We can tell you countless stories of people that have collapsed in cardiac arrest, somebody around them knows CPR, does CPR like immediately and saves a life, and that's even before the fire department arrives. So public education is huge, along with the other call response we do, and we want to continue to build those programs. In total, over so far this fiscal year, our employees, not including the Assistant Chief and myself, have worked a total of 75,000 hours, almost 76,000, so 75,901 hours. On average, every employee has done 59 hours per week. Since the last fiscal year, we ran 4,558 calls, which is a 1.6% increase over 2022, and that was about 380 calls a month. This fiscal year, we've run 3,610 calls, which is 401 per month, which is a 6% increase in our call volume every month. Just looking, you know, because I know we're talking budgets, and when we, when we look at budgets, you look at the, you know, police department, you look at the fire department, and you're like, wow, that's a really big number. So I did some analysis on some other budgets, you know, so we do some comparisons. So if you look at South Burlington Fire Department, they have 37 employees, we have 34, they have two fire stations, same as us, they run 5,100 calls a year. So right now, that's about 300 more than we run. Their budget is $5.8 million, which is $2.5 million more than our budget. So when we talk about efficiency, your fire department is running just as lean and efficient as we possibly can to provide you the services that we provide. The town that I come from, smaller town, we run about 2,500 calls a year, that's fire and EMS. We have 20 full-time employees, and their budget is $2.5 million. So it's about a million dollars less, but they have one fire station, less fire apparatus. So just, just to give you kind of an analysis of what that looks like, like we are already running on a very tight budget. Let's see, what else did I have for you here? The overtime budget, because I know that's, that's come up quite a bit. I did an analysis breakdown, which is part of those materials that we provided. 61% of that overtime budget, which currently is $320,944, is just filling vacancies. Those vacancies come from employees taking time off, employees doing training, or otherwise we, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we had some actual vacancies that we had to hire. So that's where that number comes from. callbacks, that's 7% of our overtime, that's anytime there's a structure fire or we have three ambulances out at one time, we have to call people back in to make sure your town is covered. That costs us $36,830. Community service, the public education I spoke of, is about 1% of that overtime budget, and that's 5,261. With that number, a lot of the community service that we provide is done by people that are on shift. We don't, we don't bring in extra firefighters just so it doesn't create as much overtime. Training is 2% of that budget, which is $10,523. And then regular overtime, so our employees, nobody works a 40-hour work week other than And that accumulates to 29% of the budget, which is $152,580. Your turn. I think that's all I got.
Yeah, I mean, I think the Chief covered it pretty well. In reference to the 5% to 10% increase in call volumes, I think that was also covered really well in PD's presentation. Most of that increase that we see throughout our community is, is representative in those same, those same data points. Other things that are pretty significant, while the, the intensity and complexity of the calls that were going on are, are quite a bit more significant in nature. So whereas some of the incidents that we would respond to five to 10 years ago, just the complexity or the intensity of a fire being as it is, is, is quite a bit more in nature. So I will hold my comment as most of it has been said.
Great. So thank you both. The, the purpose tonight is to look for possible changes to the draft budget for either the Fire Department or the Police Department. And, you know, one, I, I know one issue that the Chief referred to was the overtime challenge that we're having. And, and if we're available to talk about solutions to that, if, if you'd like to explore that. Also, if you are interested in finding reductions in the budget, we'd be happy to talk about these services and, and ones that you think that we should explore further to find savings, if that's what you want to do tonight.
I think while we have the benefit of the Chief and the Assistant Chief here, we, we should hear if there is a, a solution to the overtime issue.
So as we looked at the overtime budget when I did the breakdown, the major cost of overtime is from our wellness days. So the employees get wellness days. Every 10 days, they get a, I'm sorry. They get one day off in a 28-day period, plus they get vacation time and they get sick time. That's to offset, so instead of working 56 hours, like a mandatory 56 hours every week, it backs them down to 52 hours per week. So doing some more analysis on the numbers, if we hired an additional three employees, that would cost us $292,075. That would reduce our overtime by $500,000. So right now, our projected overtime expenditure is $719,166. So by adding three additional staff, we would not have to call people in for overtime to fill those vacancies when they're on vacation or their wellness days. So that would save that $500,000 in overtime. So that's, that's the solution that we're proposing. And what we, and to explain that further, there's a minimum firefighter clause in the contract. So we must maintain eight personnel in the firehouse at all times, ready to respond to calls. And the reason the number is eight is that gives us three ambulances and two on a fire truck. Now, two on a fire truck is not enough, but we're, we're trying to be cost-conscious to this community. So right now, we're running with three two-person ambulances and one two-person fire truck. If not all the ambulances are out, we put more people on the fire truck. If all the ambulances are out on calls, then we've got two people on the fire truck. So that's where that number eight comes from. By adding in three additional personnel, we won't drop below that number of eight as frequently. That's where that cost savings come from.
Could you just repeat that cost-saving number again, please?
I feel like I should break out a calculator to make sure it's right. Standby.
Because you could hear a pin drop in here and waiting for you to calculate this.
I'm going to go grab a budget notebook from the other room.
Why did they come out like that? Oh, I did, hold on. I'm not mathing well, so give me a second.
Doing math in public is hard.
All right. So the, the number in this, these numbers come from Human Resources. So they did the analysis on how much an employee costs to hire and how much that savings would be in, in the overtime, to make sure I had the right numbers. And they do, you know, they manage everybody's paychecks, so. So the total cost savings is $443,898.75.
Chief, could you say that once more? Sorry.
443. So it's 443, 898, and 75 cents.
And that's the, and that's the net savings. You're going to hire three people?
Yeah, oh, yes. Yes, that's a net saving. So that is, that, let's see. No, that wouldn't be the net savings. That would be the reduction in overtime cost. So out of that, you would have to take out the cost of the hires. So that would drop that number to 151,823.41. So 151, 823.41.
Great.
And this was from a starting point of 719K?
Yeah, 719,000.
So not to ask, well, a question that I think is going to make us all sad. In the current budget, the fire overtime is budgeted at 265K. So while we would, you know, we'd save about 150K maybe in, in real-world terms, we also have to reckon with the fact that we're budgeting for a number that's probably much too low, at least if this year is a guide. So this conversation may actually make the overall number go up, which is not the conversation's fault, but that may be.
So, but I think it's part of the conversation that our town managers having with our staff and revisiting our overall budget numbers. Is that not correct?
Oh, yes. Yes, it is.
So you would have the opportunity to place this in context in the revised budget?
Yes, we could do that if that's what the Board wants us to do for Thursday. The, the thing is that overtime is often covered by staff, the staff salary line as well. So they've had some savings in the staff salary line that's going to, that would go to overtime as well, so.
But this revised budget will give us a realistic picture for us to make a decision from.
Yeah.
And the other thing I'm going to look at and verify is that our staff budget line is absolutely correct. Because I don't have complete confidence that that number is completely right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the other things that we've been reviewing in the budget estimate that went to RTM and finding that there are some updates that need to be made, which I'll bring to you on Thursday.
Super. Okay, so let's do this a little bit backwards. I suggest that we allow the public to comment now. And let's start with the Fire Chief because they're here.
Just, I'm wondering if this might be more productive or even just an easier conversation if we, as a board, first talk about, like, what are we actually, are there big changes that people want to propose? Because, for example, if everyone here said, "We have no changes to propose for Fire", then that would make that conversation a lot shorter. Just an idea.
It certainly would, Oscar, but the public is still entitled to comment.
Of course. They may just make different comments if it's clear that things are looking one way or another.
All right. Does everyone want to make, have a statement to make about what they've heard or any questions they want to ask the Assistant Chief and Chief while they're here? And then, and then we'll open it up to the public?
I'll just say that I really appreciate that you said you're not sure and that you'll get back to us. That gives me confidence, you know, that you, you know, that we can count on you to get you us accurate information and that you took the time to do those calculations. I just want to thank you for that work that you're doing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'll weigh in. The Fire Department's vitally important. Climate change, we've had forest fires just this last fall. Building explosions. I see more need for fire in the future for our, where we live. And so I see absolutely no cuts to the Fire Department.
Oscar?
Yeah, I feel the same. I think things look to a sort of untrained outsider's eye, lean and efficient. And, you know, if, if anything, I think you guys could use more resources. So I think, I, I'm not proposing any cuts from that list of services. If anything, my only lingering questions are things you've talked about, like, you know, should the, and things we're already looking at, should the overtime line item be different, be more accurate? Things like that. And then I think there could be a longer conversation to have for next year's budget when we have more time to talk. But for this budget, I have no, no cuts proposed.
And, and then, Board, do we have three head nods telling John and the Chief and Assistant Chief to look into a solution to the overtime problem as was just identified? And I'm saying, look into it.
I mean, for the 2027 budget?
Well, we could do it now and save the money now.
Sounds complicated with our timeline, but I'd love to hear from other Board members what they think.
Well, I think it's a question of whether John, our town manager, thinks it's capable of being included in, in the budget that he's going to give us on Thursday.
If I knew tonight I could get that included into the draft on Thursday, so you have something to look at.
Great. Anyone over on this side have any comments?
Well, I don't, I don't have any proposed cuts. I don't want to touch the Fire Department's budget at all. But I guess I understand, you know, where the, I guess, to, to a, to a math layman such as myself, like the, the idea of hiring three additional firefighters to offset what is clearly an overtime. What do, what do we pay overtime? Is that something we can discuss at time and a half? Time and a half?
2.16.
Yeah, so the, so the line firefighters, their overtime rate is 2.16. That is something that was contracted years ago. I'm not even sure when it was put into place.
All right. Yeah, so I mean, paying overtime is definitely costing us more than hiring. So I mean, on, on that level, that basic makes a bunch of sense. So I think I, I wouldn't mind taking a look at it.
Great. Great. As would I. Anyone over here?
I would. I think it, it has to go along with updating our projection for overtime.
Exactly.
And that may open a whole different ballgame.
But it's a, it's a can of worms that needs to be addressed.
Oh, absolutely.
Can I actually just, one more clarifying question? So if we hire, hire three additional people, does that, I don't profess to say, like, this is the cure-all. You'll never pay out another overtime hour, but it'll, if I'm understanding what everybody's saying correctly, it'll, it'll really mitigate that.
Right. So we would, basically, our, our policy would be that, that we would keep that eight minimum clause so people could take their wellness days and take their vacation times. Right now, we fill those days.
Right.
So if we, if we drop below eight, or if we don't have an officer on duty or we don't have a paramedic on duty, then we fill with overtime. What we're trying to do is structure in a way that, that that, the largest piece of the pie is eliminated or greatly reduced. And then those smaller percentages, we'd still have the callbacks.
Sure.
I remember what the number was, but the 10, 10,000, was it?
7%.
Yeah, 7% of that pie now, which was $36,000, would still exist. And that's to, to do the fires, to do the multiple calls, things like that.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I mean, that makes sense to me.
Okay. So, great. Now, are there any more comments at this time by the select Board members to the Chief and Assistant Chief? Or shall we open it up to the public?
I'm ready to open it up to the public.
All right. I see that hand right there. Yes, you.
Good evening again. Thank you for your presentation and for being here. Thank you all for being here. My name is Megan Gray. I'm an RTM member from District Nine. I'll query through the chair. My understanding is that through our mutual aid contract, Fire provide paramedic services? Is that correct? In cases of mutual aid, are?
Like, do you mean, like, going, providing paramedic-level ambulances to other towns? We haven't.
Yeah, so the answer is, we would do that if we're called to do so within our mutual aid. However, we have not been called to do so in the nine months that we've been operating.
Thank you.
Ms. Gray, may I ask you to give all your comments in, in a stream? And then they'll, I'll direct answers to the other experts?
Sure. And as much as I can anticipate the answer, I will. I'm trying to be as efficient as possible. I appreciate your time and your point. Will hiring three new Fire personnel affect the availability of paramedics? Will it have any implication on the EMS rescue conversation? Is what I'm trying to get to. Thank you.
Thank you.
So will the new, will hiring new firefighters affect the availability of paramedics?
Yes.
We're hoping it increases the availability of paramedics, though we don't know, you know, we would like paramedics to apply, so we have more paramedics. Because one of the situations we run into now is if we don't have a paramedic on duty, we have to bring in somebody on overtime. So we'd hope to increase the number of paramedics we have.
Thank you. Tom?
Is this both Fire and Police or just Fire?
Fire. Heidi?
Heidi Fisher, District Seven. In the handouts for the meeting, the pre-meeting materials or whatever, I have a bunch of things I don't understand. I was hoping for clarification on some of these numbers. I also wonder whether in that discussion of three new possible Fire, did that include, did your numbers include benefits and all of those whole things, not just?
Yes.
Okay. The other questions I have are in the, on, I don't know what page it was, I'm sorry. It says eight of 10 at the bottom. I think the initial chart was something John Potter created with the low revenue estimate for 2025 and then giving all the revenue pieces and then expenses being a total of $1,082,590. And then at the bottom, comparing that to what rescue would cost the town. And then in the chart below that, it shows what Rescue's contract was. And again, shows 104,971 municipal cost, which is slated as expense minus revenue. But that does not match the number above it. And on the next page, the top line that was from the services that the department provides, it says, "Provide emergency medical care and transport 24/7", and the low range was $2,463,000 and the high range was $3,011,000. So I'm not understanding how, these numbers don't seem to add up, no pun intended, but they don't seem to jive. And I don't understand where some of these different numbers are coming from. And in the, I don't know how to refer to this, the memorandum or something that came from, directly from the Chief, he has also a list of, you know, what costs are. I see no overtime or benefits, or maybe the staffing line includes the benefits, I don't know. But there's no overtime here either. So I, I think what they're, what you're showing as what are the costs and what are the benefits after revenue, I don't think are accurate. I'm not a math whiz either, but... don't think are accurate. I'm not a math whiz either, but I, nothing's adding up here for me. And I've spoken to some other folks who are much more math inclined in this audience who agree with me that it's not making sense to us. So if somebody could understand it, that would be great. And the other thought I had for overtime thing is, I don't know whether it's kosher in the world of fire, but as a nurse at the hospital, we do perdiems. And perdiems, you don't pay, you don't pay benefits, you don't, you pay them their hourly salary to come in and work for you when you need them. But you're not paying benefits. And could that work in a fire department? Thank you.
Can you stay? Because I'm going to forget a lot of this stuff. Okay. So I'll start with the first piece, although I don't know if I can answer the first piece. The, the numbers, so I did the numbers on the bottom of of page eight.
Eight of 11. Okay.
Yeah, eight of 11. So that box I did. And that was based on the contract proposal that Rescue Inc. put forward and what the cost would be each fiscal year going forward.
Right.
That's where those numbers came from.
Yep.
The, I honestly, I didn't really dig into the box above it. So I don't want to, I don't want to speak on it because I don't have time to really look at those numbers. The cost of providing EMS did not, did include full benefits of those seven additional staff. It did not include overtime costs. And the reason it didn't include overtime costs is those numbers were built on a basis of, if I took those ambulances and drove them out of the fire station, what cost would leave with those ambulances? And that's where that number came from. We would still have overtime costs. We would still, every time somebody took a vacation, we'd still have to fill that slot. So having ambulances or not having ambulances does not affect overtime. The only time that affects overtime is that line where, when three ambulances are out of service, now we got backfill that, that would be the overtime associated with that. But again, the main, the main portion of our overtime cost really comes from that vacation and and sick time and wellness days. Does that answer that question?
Yeah. It's still a cost that's not being accounted in this
And I don't, to be honest, I don't know how you would realistically break that down. Like, how, because there's no, like, I could, I could look at how many times three ambulances were out of the fire station, and that would be specific to EMS overtime. But I can tell you that number's not really big. But it would be, you know, it would be a cost. So, yeah, I couldn't even
It's not accounted for here.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't ballpark it. But it is, overtime is not included, to answer that question.
Okay. Let's have John interrupt for a second.
Okay.
Well, I can just address the, the table one at the top that you referred to first. And that, that was the table that staff put together in September of 2023. So this is kind of an accountability thing. Back in 2023, we thought with a low revenue future, which is sort of where we are, maybe a little bit better than the low revenue estimate, these were the expenses that we predicted. And we were expecting that the municipal expense less revenue would be 255,000 at that time. But you see in the table below, it's actually more like 104, 105,000. So even better with Chief Simon's numbers than what Patrick Moreland had predicted back in September of 2023. And that was really the only point here, was that it actually, we're performing right now better than we even expected out of the analysis from 2023.
Okay. And
Okay. So Heidi, you have to wrap it up because your time is over.
Yeah, I'll answer your, your other number question. So when we looked at the, the low range, high range, that is just taking the number of hours an employee spends doing a task. So it has, has nothing to do with specifically, like, how much it costs to have the ambulances in the fire station. It's about, it's really, you could, you could take that cost number out, and you could just say how we're spent doing this task. So we do 95% of our call volume is EMS. So that's why that number is so big. If you take our entire budget and take 95% of that, that's the EMS staffing costs. Does that, because what we tried to do was break down every responsibility that the fire department has. But the reason that table is different, if I, if I pulled the ambulances out of the firehouse, I wouldn't save the town $3 million.
And so let me just interrupt and say that this table is an exercise that the town manager put together to identify a cost assigned to each service, so that the select board could weigh that and see whether there were any service, services that could be examined to be eliminated. It's, it's not anything that would be comparative to the other charts regarding overall fire, fire EMS numbers. So Heidi, I'll, I'll ask you
Thank you.
To give way to the next person.
There's someone up here.
Oh, you, we also have people behind you who've had their hand up longer. Bob?
Advocate the area here. Chair, Chair McLaughlin. I shared this before, but just to do it and open. First, I want to thank the chief for his presentation on April 15th, especially comparing fire EMS, adjusted EMS costs against the $258,000 to be spent on Rescue Inc. services. However, I must take issue with the 454,000 figure for Rescue Inc. listed for comparison purposes on page eight of the agenda package for this evening. I believe that latter number comes from the divisive process used to get us where we are today, by requiring Rescue to provide a security bond, when that was never a condition in the nearly 60-year relationship. The use of that artificially inflated number only dregs up the uneven discussion process that was used, and puts up yet another barrier to the hope of mending a relationship, which ought to be a goal of this administration. And I would welcome any comment with respect to that.
Thank you, Bob. John, would you like to answer that?
Chief. Got it.
Okay.
Thank you for the question, Bob. First, the first thing I want to say is, I have absolutely 100% interest in repairing relationships with Rescue Inc. They are an entity that lives within our town. And currently, there is no relationship between us. So therefore, you know, there's a service that's right on your doorstep that we could be working together to help this community, and we're not. So I have every interest in the world in repairing that relationship. And hopefully that, hopefully I can tell you soon that, that, you know, Rescue Inc. is now helping us out in the town, that when we're, our three ambulances are out, you've got another ambulance service around your doorstep that's helping us out. More to come on that. That's, that's a hope. So when I first put those numbers together, I wasn't here during all this transition. And I'm like, I need, you know, how much does Rescue Inc. cost? So I went back to the 2022 proposal.
Twenty-three.
And it, 23.
Yeah.
It was 285,600. And so I put that number in there. I created the cost analysis. I'm like, that, that's the minimum cost that it would cost for Rescue Inc. to be in here. And then I dove a little deeper. So when I backed up to 2018, when we went to from, for Rescue Inc.'s cost, from 18 to 19 was an 8% increase, to 25%, 21, 5%, 22, 5%, 23, that, that 285,600 was a 2% increase. All right. So now, now I'm going to guess. I'm going to enter the world of guessing. So if we stayed with Rescue Inc., their average increase every year was 5%. So for the 2026 budget, Rescue Inc. would cost us $330,000, 330,618,000, with 5% increases. So those are would be numbers that I would just be like, maybe they raise us 10%, maybe they raise us 2%. We really don't know. There's no contract that says how much they're going to raise us. But the factual contract that we have was a proposal that laid out the years from 2024 through 2029, and how much Rescue Inc. would cost us. So that's where that number came from. That came from a factual document that said, this is how much EMS is going to cost Brattleboro in the year of 2024, 2025, 2026, 2027. So all I was trying to do when I, when I published this memo is give you facts. And that's, that's why that number was presented in that way.
Yeah. And I think maybe I would just add a little bit to that. And to answer Bob's question about what was included in the proposal from Rescue. And there was a performance bond that the town asked for. And I think that Rescue estimated that was about $22,000 worth of that, 454,000. So a very small component of it. Requiring a performance bond is, is not a stupid thing for a municipality to do. We saw in Keene that they lost Eluzio ambulance and had nothing. They had to recover from that. We know St. Johnsbury is going through that process right now. So I, so I don't think that was an unwise thing to do. And it certainly didn't affect the, the proposal very much. What was a big delta between the number that the chief talked about and the, the proposal that we got from Rescue at 454,000 was the decision to use Keene dispatch instead of Brattleboro dispatch. And I think that was about 120,000 on top of it. And that was completely the choice of the contractor in their proposal to do that. They had other options, but that was what they, they chose to do at the time. So
Great.
I hope that clarifies.
Thank you. Let's go to the two people on Zoom, and then we'll move to police.
So it's David Levinbach and then Dick DeGray. You're still muted.
Oh, there you go. David Levinbach, District Nine. I appreciate that Mr. Potter has lots of analytical work he has to do these days. But I did want to say that the Finance Committee did make the observation that it would be worthwhile looking at whether adding staff would be more cost effective than relying on overtime. So I would encourage members of the Select Board to ask Mr. Potter to do that work. Thank you.
Great. Mr. DeGray?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'd like to, yes, thank you. I'd like to ask, my concern with the overtime is that if you go, last year, we saw it start to escalate. And we were working with Golden Cross. And this year, it is out of control. I would actually like the chief to go back and look at years prior to us being full-time EMS, and look at those overtime line items. And I don't think they're anywhere near what they are since we've started doing EMS. So that's a huge concern of mine, that hiring three additional staff is, is going to have an effect on the revenue that we bring in. And because we're having issues with revenue coming in, I'm not sure if hiring the staff is going to be the right way to go of, because of the impact it's going to have on the revenue line item that EMS is billing out. So if the chief could talk to that, I would appreciate it. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Dick. I, I'm going to ask that those answers be incorporated into the analysis that the fire department and the town manager will do in the budget for Thursday, and we can have that discussion then. And I'm going to move on, except for the woman in the back.
My name is Carol McManus, and I'm District Eight. Lisa brought up something. I'm just curious. I don't, is it possible to do per diem?
We'll, we'll tell you that on Thursday. How's that?
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to police and
Can I say the tiniest thing?
Sure.
I just want to say to any, I don't know, budget hawks out there in the audience whose head is exploding because we just very quickly talked about adding three positions, we won't make that decision lightly. And so, and not tonight.
And not tonight.
And not tonight, yes.
Okay. So, Tom, you had your hand up before.
Thank you. Tom Grasso, Brattleboro representative from District Nine, also just a regular taxpayer and citizen. Also, just want to say, Fire Department's doing great. I support them wholly. Just, since you guys were all okay with where you were, I didn't want to waste your time. Pretty startling information that the, that the police presented tonight about the challenges that this town faces, and it's not homegrown crime. I think what the town has done, the previous Select Board and the BRAT team is making great improvements, and we should continue it. So this is not the time to reinvent the wheel. And I would urge continued support of what the Brattleboro Police Department is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right. We're going to hear from the public. Yes, John?
Do you want to dismiss the, the fire chiefs?
Oh, yes.
My question was for the
Wasn't the chief were done yet, or?
Yeah, yeah.
I just had a question for the fire chief.
You had a question for the fire chief. All right. Not so fast, Jay.
It's, I think it may be an easy one. I'm still new and I'm learning. And so my questions are just, I want to make sure that I understand what's in front of me. On page 10 of this packet, it talks about maintain Knox boxes in town. As a personnel cost, it's a small, it's eight to 9,000. But we're looking at where we can make a potential savings. Could you just explain what that is?
Sure. So Knox boxes are locked boxes on the side of buildings. And we have keys to them. So in all our fire FRS, we have what's called Knox Box Key. So it's a uniform key that goes to every single box. So any business or resident that wants a Knox box, they put their key inside it. And essentially, what it does is it saves their door. So rather than breaking down their door, we open up that box, we get the key, and we enter that way.
In case of fire, and you need to
Yeah, fire, you know, a medical emergency, if somebody's fallen down, they can't get to their door, you know, we'll break the door down to get to that person. But rather than do that, if they have a Knox box, then we can, you know, enter a more casual way.
Okay, you're dismissed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Chief Hardy and Assistant Chief Evans, would you like to come up to the table?
Yes.
In case you're interrogated, which is always so much fun. All right. Members of the public. Ken?
There are seats up here in the front, if people would like to sit down.
Ken Feg, District Eight. First off, I'd like to mention a couple of articles that were in the Commons over 10 years ago, almost 15 years ago. It's talking to the emergency nature of where we are right now. It was a letter by an article, an opinion by Harold Hamilton, my neighbor, that says, this is also Brattleboro. It was, I think, the week that the co-op person was murdered, and there was another murder in Dummerston. He said, Brattleboro was unspeakable beauty, but horrific ugliness, darkness of poverty and drugs. This was on August 17, 2011.
Ken, let me ask you, interrupt you, ask you this question. Somewhere in this commentary, is there a solution or an opinion about the public safety budget?
Oh, sure. Okay. I'm going, I'll, there was another article, but I'll, I'll move on. I think I've mentioned I'd love to volunteer, to help downtown. I'm not, you know, necessarily afraid. I think there's a lot of other people in town who would like to volunteer. And so I'd like to do that. I know it's probably not going to happen now with this budget, but perhaps next budget. I mean, I'd like to have, have it happen this budget.
Are you saying that you would like to volunteer instead of the trained police officers and BRAT team?
For people who are afraid to walk down the street, I would gladly walk down the street with them. I actually walked from an event to the library one time with somebody who asked for that help. help, and I provided that. And it was uneventful. They were safe, and so, yes, with a group of people. I happen to want to help people, and I'm also cheap, I mean frugal. And there might also be people who are that way as well.
Okay, Ken, thank you.
I'd love to say something. May I say something?
No.
I just wanted to ask Chief Hardy and Assistant Chief Evans, just feedback on that, because you have a citizen who wants to help. Sounds like the story Justin Johnson's talked about when he first got involved with Project CARE.
Amanda, people are having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, anyway, I think you heard me. It's all.
For an opinion of that?
Yeah, just feedback, if there are other citizens who are interested in, how do they do that?
Yeah, so, other citizens have, have come and told us, sometimes they want to be helpful, and they want to help. Sometimes I, especially depending on what that help is, I try to talk to people and to think that, just, you know, think about what would you do if you did have a situation where now you are the person that's expected to protect the other person? Because that, that's a reality, you know? So, I like people to think about their, their safety and also the person that they want to help, you know? But we have some, we've been having some meetings with groups of people with other ways to help the community, but maybe not so much in a protective way. Because in a protective way, then you not only put yourself in the position to be the protector, but now if something happens, like Mr. Faye said, he walks, he would walk somebody on Main Street. Well, that's nice, I love it, you know, I love that. But I'm realistic of that, that may not be a good idea on our Main Street, depending on who's on our Main Street.
Thank you.
Elizabeth?
Thank you. My name's Elizabeth Bridgewater, and I'm the Executive Director of the Wyndham &amp; Windsor Housing Trust. We're a housing provider that manages over 300 apartments in Brattleboro, many of them downtown. I'm here to speak in favor of full funding for the Brattleboro Police Department. My remarks, we're going to cover some of the innovations that you've already heard tonight. So, I was going to talk about Jim Baker, I was going to talk about the Situation Table, I was going to talk about One Brattleboro, but you've heard a lot of detail about that. So, what I want to say is that you can't innovate without capacity. We heard the word innovate over and over again tonight, and we heard a lot of inspiring strategies that the Police Department, under Chief Hardy's leadership, have brought forth for this town at a critical time, when crime is rising. And the only reason that that has been able to be planned and launched and implemented is because they have capacity. When we first met Chief Hardy, when she came, I think it was within the first week, she was doing a lot of outreach in the community. And we sat down, and she said to me, you know, "My first charge is, I gotta, I gotta hire people. I got no people," right? And it was really inspiring, because she also talked about what was happening with drug trafficking. It was like one of the first times that somebody had named it, and we were seeing this happening on our properties. We were seeing people victimized in the community, and she put a name to it, and it was such a relief. And so, to see her build her team, innovate, and then start to have impact, which we saw tonight, is just really powerful and really inspiring. Now's not the time to turn the clock back. If we turn the clock back now, all of that money and all of that capacity that has been built up will be wasted. It's not only just saving, it's actually wasting. Part of the capacity that didn't get talked about tonight is some of the detailed conversations that Chief Hardy and her team have with housing providers in the community. Christine Hazard and I and our staff meet every single month with the Police Department, and we talk about specific issues that need to be addressed in, in our, on our properties and in our neighborhoods. And I'll use Nine Canal as an example, because I think that was a very visible situation that was going on with a lot of trespassing in this highly visible downtown property. And we met in the hallway. It was Chief Hardy and Officer Washburn and my maintenance supervisor stood in that hallway and just talked for about a half hour, like, "What are we going to do?" And we outlined, actually Officer Washburn outlined the legal framework, what we could do, how we could create a safer environment. We talked about alarming the door, installing cameras that were directly available to the Police Department. And when we implemented all of the things that we discussed, it was like a light switch went off. There was no more activity in that hallway. I personally look at those cameras every week, and the only people walking through that hallway is actually the Brattleboro Police Department, like, in the middle of the night. So, they're doing their job. It's really inspiring work. I asked, I asked Captain Petlock recently, "Was it something you did, or was it what we did?" And he said, "You know what, Elizabeth? It was actually the combination. You know, you kept at it, we kept at it, and together, we solved a problem." So, that's just an example of collaboration.
Elizabeth, thank you very much.
Thank you, I'll, I'll end with this. It's just not the time to turn back the clock. So, I'm in full favor of full funding, and I hope that's what happens tonight and at the town meeting. Thank you.
Great. No clapping, please. Let's hear from George. Robin, you have a comment. Let's, let's have Robin, and then George, and then Christine.
Thanks, Liz. Robin Morgan, Brattleboro, District Eight. I wanted to offer a little more context to settle the comments at the outset of this section in, which is that the conversations about community safety in Brattleboro did not start in 2022. Just like there has been a lot of people showing up to talk about this starting then, there were a lot of people showing up to talk about it years and years before that. And only one of the people on the Select Board has been on it long enough to have, have served during these conversations. But in 2020, there was tons of people showing up to talk about it. And what folks were talking about then was, how do we create safety that prevents the type of incidents that police are called to address? So, looking at this from a holistic point of view, not a after-things-have-already-gotten-bad point of view. But unfortunately, a lot of the recommendations did not get taken up. And I'm not blaming this on that, but in tandem, a lot of other stuff happened in the world, and addiction got worse, drug trafficking got worse, and more visible problems emerged in the town. But a lot of the things that we're dealing with also cannot be prevented by police. Police can address drug trafficking. Police cannot prevent addiction. Police cannot address the housing crisis. And so, I really want to encourage the board to also recognize that during the meetings that you referenced about last, last fall and in 2022, people were showing up to talk about those solutions, too. They weren't all showing up to say the same thing. People were showing up to say, "Please don't just enact a community conduct ordinance. Please think about supporting the orgs that are working towards solutions, not just the police, but the rest of the orgs that are part of the Situation Table, too." And we heard from Jim Baker that this is a public health issue. We cannot police our way out of this. We heard from the company that did the data review, that said, "These are a small number of people that are falling through the cracks of the system. We've got to meet those needs, and then we will see these problems start to improve." So, apart from that, looking at this specific to a budget, as a member of the school board, we've been, when I was on that, hit with some of these same situations that you're in right now, where you're seeing the, the needs are really high, and the costs that you have no control over are going up, like health insurance. And so, how do you manage that without creating an undue burden on the taxpayers? In the school district budget, which is much larger than the town of Brattleboro's budget, the very first thing that we would do is do not hire new positions that have not been filled yet. Okay? So, that's one thing that I would have really encouraged the board to do. And the, there, I don't want to overlook the improvements that we saw in the data that was presented by the Police Department. So, we can see that even with the number of staff that they have right now, they're already making a difference in some of the issues that they're trying to address. And so, I really would urge the board to consider not continuing to hire more positions that have not yet been filled, but maybe taking that happy medium to try and lessen the burden on taxpayers. Thank you.
George?
Let's see. I am, well, just for the record, I'm George Karabikakis, CEO of HCRS. And I really, I have to say that I really want to applaud, and I really appreciate the work of the Police Department, of the town, the collaborations that we've built through One Brattleboro, which is, which you've heard about. I mean, Stephen Brown's comments were just beautifully, you know, really articulate, and as was all the presentations that we've had. And I just want to say that we are, we are definitely in favor of BRAT, because what we're looking at is not just, as I think it was Justin might have said, you know, "We're not here to arrest our way out of, out of this situation. We can't do it." People's lives are very, very complicated. That's why, at the Situation Table, it's people looking at housing, it's transportation, it's access to healthcare. It is public health. It is dealing with, whether it's facility improvements or, or partnerships that bring people together to support the lives of the folks that we, that are in our communities, and finding some creative solutions. And there's a lot of incredibly committed and dedicated people who are doing that. And I, so, and I know, and, and the BRAT team is really doing a great job, because they are, in fact, connecting people to those social services, connecting people to those health services, as we've heard. And I think that's really important, and also acknowledging and recognizing that, that the factors, the social factors that we're dealing with are really rooted. It is, it is poverty, it is housing, it's all the, all those social determinants. And I do remember, and I, I do agree, I agree with so much that's been said, but I remember at the works, it was some years ago, there were some gatherings where they closed down the works to have a community gathering to talk about some of the challenges that we're facing. And so, I think collectively, we can really make this work, and I do want to say that, you know, I, you know, we support the BRAT team, and at the same time, acknowledging that I think our goal is to, as I think John put out there, that over time, that that can, we can kind of, I don't want to say work our way out of that job, but really shift things, so we can really focus on, on the sense of really community and belonging and commitment and connection. And I think that's something that we, we can actually do right now as well. So, anyway, those are my comments, and so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Christine?
Hey, thank you so much. I'm Christine Hazard. I'm the Executive Director of Brattleboro Housing Partnerships. I'm also an RTM member in District Eight. But I'm here right now representing my part in the One Brattleboro group, and also as a representative of Brattleboro Housing Partnerships. So, as someone who has worked in human services for a very long time, and has helped to develop programs specifically to support people in staying successfully housed, I have been a firsthand witness that when something goes wrong, you call first responders, and they're the only people who are going to show up. Human service agencies are not going to show up when things are really, when people are having a really difficult time. So, when there's a crisis with someone on our properties or the broader community, the people who show up are those first responders. This can be the Fire Department, but if there's a potentially risky situation, it's definitely going to be the Police Department. While human service agencies have a role of supportive services work, they are not attending to these critical events. The first responders are the one, the only ones who show up, and this can be challenging because it doesn't always feel like the right fit, but it is what happens. So, given this reality, the Police and Fire Departments are actively engaging right now in all of the human service agencies to meet the needs of the people in the community. They're doing this work really thoughtfully, so this isn't something that I've seen that has come off the cuff. This has been a very deliberate approach to thinking about the Brattleboro community and the needs of the people, and also the opinions of the people, by engaging really successfully with the human service agencies. I've sat through the Situation Table many times. I've sent staff every week to the Situation Table. And I will say, years ago, when we found somebody in crisis, we couldn't get somebody to come out because it was too risky, except for the police. I've been in those situations where I was trying to talk to residents, and a police officer was standing behind a bush to not, like, make them upset. And we have come so far from that. This, a couple of weeks ago, we had an incident in one of our properties, and we really were afraid that someone was being taken advantage of. And we talked about it with the Police Department, and they had this, like, wraparound approach to meeting with the resident, going in, talking to them, and then bringing in supportive services, and the social worker, the police social worker from HCRS, and the community resource team. And they, the police stepped out and left them there, and since then, we haven't had a call. So, I understand where people are coming from. I feel the same way. The last thing I want to do is call the Police Department sometimes, but in reality, that's who is showing up. So, without supporting them and not fully supporting this project that they've done, I feel like we're really cutting our losses before we can see the benefits. So, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Quick point of order, if that's okay? I realized I forgot to ask, do we have any interest in the same process as we did for Fire, where we see what's actually on the table with the five of us, so people have more to bounce off of? If not, that's okay, just an idea.
I, I think we should just, because I think there's a lot, a lot more comments regarding the police, that we should stick to asking the public to keep their comments budget-related.
Sure.
Abby, did you have a comment?
Abby Manoukian, District Eight rep. My comment will be budget-related, but I just want to say that I found the intro to this specific Select Board meeting so wildly offensive. No other department was invited to give a one-hour PowerPoint about why their department is so critical to the town of Brattleboro. And in fact, when Starr wanted to speak to possible budget cuts at the end of last meeting, she was denied that opportunity. So, it does not feel like there is at all equal opportunities for the departments to defend what they are doing for this town. And what this was, was an hour of propaganda, where we were showed through fear-mongering why we need an inflated police budget to protect us from all, from the fact that the war on drugs doesn't work, and that, and that that, the only option is to continue paying for police. So, in the future, I would ask that if you are going to ask a department to defend what they do, every single department is asked the same. Otherwise, it's totally unfair. And what we are presented with is one side of a story. I, I value the Police Department's work, I value the Fire Department's work. I agree with what Robin said in terms of looking at the budget, at what the fiscal year was, the last time the budget was approved, a representative town meeting, which was FY '25, and holding it to that, and definitely not filling any open positions currently. We're not going to get to the budget that we want as a community by cutting $2,000 in juvenile kids' books. We're going to get to that budget by looking at hard numbers and hard realities that have to do with vacancies and values that our town needs to, needs to show we have. Thank you.
Dina, did you have a comment?
Hi, Dina Chadwick, District Nine, also an RTM member. I fully support the Brattleboro Police Department, and you all got my email, and I have expressed this several times, so it won't go on, but I will share a little tiny story to support the Brattleboro BRAT team, and I think Justin is his name. I met him out in the hallway, and I found out that he is driving up to Burlington on his own time to find my brother. So, if they're not doing good work, then I don't know what, I mean, what else can we do? My brother's is substance use issues, and this is really hard for me to speak about this, because it's really emotional. But the Brattleboro Police Department and the BRAT team and the CARE team are doing amazing things. They're not just out in the street just to ticket or arrest people, they're actually helping people to get better. or arrest people. They're actually helping people to get better, to make our community better, so we can have all the things that we want for our community. So without that, we have nothing. Without that outreach, we have nothing. So I, please, I urge the board not to cut a dime from the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
Hi, Randy Blodgett, District Seven. First of all, thanks for your service, everyone. We don't need to cut anything. We need to use all the wraparounds and everything that was discussed tonight, to the greatest degree possible. I, I do agree with one of the previous speakers, that it would be great in the next budget cycle to have each department. I, I did like that idea, but it was far from copulosa tonight. We all have different values in this town. I think there's a lot of different opinions, and that's why we're here tonight. And I want to see everybody's opinion, so we can make a great decision. But, one thing on revenue, with the police, with the fire, with the EMS, is there any risk assessment for the hotels? They are a profit, you know, entity. We talked about cap taxes and everything else. Is there a way to say, if they're not working with the police, if they're not working with the EMS, there is some kind of risk fee generated, or some way to do that, and maybe we can't do it now, but maybe in the future, it's something we can figure out how to do, because $600,000 and some thousand dollars is a lot of money. And what happens when they're done, the hotel, I've been to the Quality Inn, we donate to, whenever we can, we make donations. It's hell there, okay? Anybody, I challenge anybody to donate, go up there, social worker, and, and just look in. You don't, you wouldn't want to be there. When these people are done taking the state's money, what's going to happen? They're going to drop that. It's going to be an empty shell. Someone's going to come in and maybe buy it eventually, and say, it needs to be reassessed, because now it's only worth this. So we need to think long-term on this, and I would just challenge some creative thinking, hopefully now, but for sure, coming up. How do we get around that to charge, and if the state isn't any of this money, they're getting money from the state, let's figure out how to get some for ourselves. Thank you again for all your service.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, John, do you want to answer that, because I know you've been working very hard on that issue?
Well, I could address that a little bit. I mean, that, that was one of the reasons that the last select board passed the acceptable conduct ordinance. That had a provision in it that would have allowed us to, uh, basically do what you were suggesting, Mr. Blodgett, for the motels. And that was approved by the select board, but RTM decided that they didn't like that ordinance, so it was rescinded. So the town has no leverage over the motel owners. Uh, so instead, because RTM didn't want us to have that kind of, uh, ability to, uh, to basically charge them, we pivoted to work more closely with the state and the, the program that's administering that program, the motel program, to try to use the leverage of their contract with the motel owners to get better enforcement and better, uh, management of the, the motels. And we've had success in, I think, two of them now, to start to bring the call volumes down out there. It's, it's not, it's not going to be a way for the town to recover any revenues, but it's going to be a way for us to reduce the, uh, the need at those, those places. And, and so we'll continue to work on, on that avenue. If, um, you know, one, one of the things that we talked with the legislative delegation about was the local option tax, and how there's approximately four, almost $500,000 that leaves Brattleboro for the local option tax, and is used by the state for statewide purposes. And, uh, we had requested that if, if some of that funding could stay in the towns that are hosting the motel programs, that would really help out the property taxpayers. But, uh, I know that, uh, the legislature's still talking about that, but I think that they're leaning towards less of a, um, less of a shift in the, the, um, the ratio between what the local communities can retain, and what the state takes from the local option sales tax, uh, than, than we would like, but, um, they are making some progress there, so.
And one of the things that we're trying to do with the legislature is, um, talk to them so they understand this issue, because they don't seem to, um, understand the facts that we've heard tonight about the impact of the motel program on our community. So, Randy, you want to?
Are any of our state reps here tonight? Any of the reps or senators?
No, they're, they're in session right now.
Okay. Well, I, I challenge them, hopefully they watch this, and I would like to see a rewrite of that ordinance without the things that upset people. Maybe we can talk that through, so the, the parts in it that really irritated people, maybe we can reword them, because we can't rely on the state. We have to help ourselves get up.
Norma?
Yeah, so I just want to, um, I need to make a comment. Um, because when I came and I presented everything that is, that we're dealing with, you know, and that's up to the select board, I really thought we all would get a chance to all talk about our departments and everything like that, so that's, that's not something that I had in my mind. But I will say that when I hear words like fear mongering and propaganda, then I take offense to that, because the people that we are helping, the people that, the victims of the crimes we're seeing, the victims of the assaults we're seeing, I go to these calls, I back up my offices, I've stood in people's blood. So when you tell me that I'm propaganda or fear mongering, I think that's very unfair. You can disagree with us, we have nothing to gain, my department has nothing to gain. By, by being bigger, being smaller, we're still going to do our job, and we're still going to do what we have to do to protect this community. But when you talk about, when you talk about propaganda, I take offense to that, and when you talk about fear mongering, because I speak to these victims, and they are in fear. Okay? So I do not disrespect anyone. I disagree, and I don't disrespect. But to say that we are fear mongering, and we're utilizing propaganda, these are real people that, that I talk to all the time on the phone, or they come to my office.
All right. No clapping. Thank you. Greg?
Thank you. I'm Greg Warden, downtown business owner, among other things. Excuse me, my voice is not so great tonight, but I'm in full support of the police budget and the fire budget. Um, having been downtown for almost 40 years now, um, I've seen, you know, rises and falls in all sorts of, um, activity in the downtown. And in the last, well, since the chief has been here, we've done, we've gone in a good direction. Things are getting better, especially now that you've got all the people working together. Um, we've had, um, an interesting time, too, because in the last few years, people have come in and some, some have called and said, hey, you know, we aren't coming downtown, because we're afraid to come downtown, or I just, you know, don't feel good about coming downtown. And this, um, presentation with everybody working together is shifting that. The downtown has to survive in order for the town to survive. Our, our businesses, our buildings, if they go down in value and the town disappears, then you talk about taxes going up for everybody. Taxes would really go up if the downtown disappears. So, um, we're really happy to support the police department, and the fire department, and the library, too. Um, but we're really grateful for all the activity that they provide.
Thank you. Uh, Leona, did you have a comment?
Hello. My name is Leona Watt. I'm a probation supervisor with the Brattleboro Probation and Parole Office. And I've spent, I was talking about this earlier, this is my first select board meeting, so it's been very exciting. Um, but one of the things I just wanted to talk about, I was going to be silent and just be a part and be in support, but I am a part of One Brattleboro, and I've been so excited to be a part of One Brattleboro, and the changes that are being brought about because of that, and also a part of the Situation Table, which I'm so excited about, and we have one tomorrow, so. But, one of the things I wanted to just point out is, in probation and parole, we are literally seeing the effect of what the, um, the BRAT team is doing. So we have, um, a notification system about when someone, a supervised individual has contact with the police department, right? So at first, we're like, oh, wow, someone has contact. But then we realize, that person had contact for help. They're getting taken to a residential treatment facility. They're being, they're being found, and they're in distress, and they're being dropped off at groundwork shelter. They're being helped. It is just not about, oh, this person is in trouble. It is about, they are being helped by that BRAT team who have taken, who are there, and they are support to them. And that is so important, because it's not just about, we're going to put someone who's in distress or dealing with a substance misuse issue in jail. That is not the point. The point is seeing a need, and I'm so proud of the Brattleboro Police Department, I'm so proud of the select board, I'm so proud of everyone who's a part of the process of adding this community resource, that is meeting people at their need. They're meeting them when they need help. It is not just about, we're here to say you're in trouble, and we're going to take you to probation and tell your PO. No, we're here to say, we see that you have a need, and we have the resources to help you get the treatment you need, to take you to a shelter, to actually bring you up at the Situation Table, so that we can have an emergent meeting and say, we have these resources, and let's send those resources out to help that person. So I am so thankful, I could go on and on, but I'm not going to do that. I am so thankful for the Brattleboro Police Department. I'm so thankful for BRAT. I'm so thankful for Justin, but I tell him that all the time, because he's a resource we now have, when we have someone who is in distress, and we go, we know Justin is busy, but we're going to text Justin and see if he's available to help us. And every time, he is, and he's like, if I have to move something, if I have to drop it, I will help, because that person needs help, and I'm here, and that is what I'm here for, and we're thankful, our office is thankful. And I just wanted to make sure, it's been like two and a half hours, but I don't care. I'm here. I'm thankful, and I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, there's a hand in the back in a black sweater. You, yeah.
Hi, my name's Fallon. I'm from Brattleboro. I've never come to one of these meetings, and I definitely don't do well in public speaking. Um, but one of the things that kept being brought up with, I'm in, I'm in favor, by the way, but one of the things that kept being brought up over and over with the library, was that people kept saying it was a safe space for a bunch of people to go. And the service that Fire Department and Brattleboro provides is safe spaces. I've lived here all my life, and I've seen the decline, and I've seen the change. And another thing that people keep talking about is all the work that they're doing for the drug problem. And they, that is not going away anytime soon, unfortunately, and I love all the services coming together. I think that's great. Um, but because we're not there yet, we still need them in order to help with that, and just do their job, period. So the people who don't want to fund them, or want to take funds away, when they are addressing an issue regarding drugs, and your mom is having a heart attack, and we don't have enough people to go help your mom, I think that's when people are going to be more affected and think a little bit differently. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The woman behind you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Chase. I own Twice Upon a Time in Brattleboro. Um, and, uh, my family's been here for 38 years, so of course, we've seen a lot. Um, and I just noticed, since the chief, um, did her plan and everything, I'm bad at this, um, since she came up with her plan, I just, I feel safer. I feel like someone has our back. I feel like the businesses downtown are really struggling, and it's just getting worse. I'm just, I feel like we're on a precipice, and if we don't, if we don't put everything we've got into this now, I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know what's going to happen for me, for downtown, for businesses, for my family. Um, I feel safer. I feel like she has my back. I feel like Brattleboro as a town wants to help everyone. That's why people come here the way they've come. And I think the chief and the police department has done an amazing job balancing, meeting the need of the people who need help, and helping them, and punishing the people that need that kind of punishment. People who need to go to jail are going to jail, and people who need to get help are getting help. And I think that's what Brattleboro as a whole is looking for. Um, I feel like I needed someone to have my back, and Chief Hardy and the BRAT team has been there every week to have my back, to pick up hundreds of needles in my alleyway, and to tell us that they're there if we need them, because it's a battle. And I'm in this for the fight. So I'm doing my best, and I'm in full support of the police, and everything that we can do to fight this head-on, uh, to support the entire town and everyone in it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Penny?
Hi, it's Penelope Wur, and I have also got a retail store downtown. And I'm thinking during this meeting that I don't want to cut any of these departments, because clearly all of these departments are incredibly important, and that also includes the library, which is a symbol of our democracy and our desire to learn, okay? But one of the things that stands out to me, um, having seen all the graphs and everything, and I hate to say this, because it feels kind of slightly uncomfortable, but 85% of the calls out to the police department have been from people who are out of town. And clearly, there is a connection between the motel program and the people who are coming from outside of town. Um, I don't know whether there's a connection also with the motel problem and the amount of drugs that are coming into town from outside of town, but I feel that the state has a responsibility to come to our aid. And I don't know why we are in a position where we're struggling to sort out our budget when we are aiding, I mean, you know, coming to the help of the state to deal with their drug problem, their housing problem, and all of these things. And I think we just need to look at it from a different angle. I, I would be the first person to write to the state and say to them, I mean, write to, um,
Our legislative.
Yeah, write to Governor Scott and say, you have a responsibility to help us out, because we're going to have to start cutting things that we need in this town. And I can tell you, I agree with you, Nicole. Business has been so bad. Uh, it has got greatly improved since you came and organized this, and I'm incredibly grateful for everything that you've done. I do feel a lot safer now. I also just feel like there's so much more continuity. I've had people come into the shop, um, to introduce themselves to me. Um, there's a, a really big difference in town right now. There isn't a great difference in retail shopping right now, but there's a big difference in town. So, um, my idea is we need to go to Montpelier and complain about what we're having to cut in this town in order to deal with the problem that they've dumped on us.
Thank you, Penny.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, my, my goal from the select board retreat last year was to get revenue sharing. Um, it's only become more important now, and, and I would recommend we all write to our legislative delegation, um, and our governor. Um, so, more about that later, but definitely.
Sue, Sue Graff.
Speaking of the state.
Not here in my state capacity. You, you, you stole my punchline. Uh, so I'm Sue Graff. I'm a 20-year resident in Brattleboro. I live at Marlborough Avenue. And first and foremost, want to be here as a resident, not in my work capacity, which I'll get to later, in full support of our public safety budget. And I'm going to share a little anecdote with you. So I live in town and a couple of years ago, cars were getting tossed, right? Cars getting broken into in our neighborhood. Finally happened to us, happened to us over and over again. And I didn't want to report it. Felt silly to waste the time of the police department on, you know, whatever, somebody stole my chapstick. But I realized that my daughter's car had gotten tossed. And even though I encouraged her not to keep anything of any value in her car, sure enough, her ATM card and her library card and all the things were in the car. And so it felt important to show her that she had some accountability to that situation. She hadn't locked her car and she kept, you know, valuable things in it. And then that ATM card was used by the perpetrator to buy things locally. So we knew that person needed that resource, right? And so I had compassion for the person who had broken into my daughter's car. I wanted them to be held accountable for what they'd done. And I wanted my daughter to have accountability for her, her role in this. So we can have both. We can have compassion and we can have accountability. And I think the things that we're talking about tonight and the ways that we're working together and have been articulated over and over again, so I won't go into it over and over again, show that, prove that, illustrate that. And I think they're not mutually exclusive. And so I just, you know, I, I do have a role with the state. I work for the Agency of Human Services that runs the motel program. We can talk about that offline. And I encourage you all to do the things that you've been encouraged to do and, you know, reach out to your legislator and legislators and the governor. And I can certainly answer questions specifically to that program and how it's implemented. But the blame game and pointing fingers isn't going to do it. Certainly holding people and institutions accountable for the things that they're responsible for, I'm, I'm all about. And having compassion for our residents. And even visitors and out-of-state folks are here and we're here to serve them if they choose to, choose Vermont as their home. And so I just, I need to, I, I think that compassion and accountability might be a phrase that I, I learned from Justin Johnston. I may have, I didn't make it up myself. I think it appears even in the police, Brattleboro Police Department's vision and, and mission statement, which I so appreciate. I took a picture of it when I was in the police department once because I was so blown away by that articulation. So full support personally and professionally. And just want to, want to remind us that it's a forced choice. You know, having, having law enforcement or public safety versus care and social and human services is not the choice we want to make. They're not mutually exclusive. So, thank you.
Great. Let's do Carol, Marsha and Heidi and then we'll go to Sue.
My name is Carol McManus and I do live in District Eight. And I came up here in high school and then left and came back, been back 28 years. I'm going to try and do this without being emotional. I really want to express my gratitude to Brattleboro PD, the Fire Department, all the agencies in, in the community. But I have witnessed the interactions of the police officers. I've had to experience firsthand. I just love how, you know, of course there are those cases where somebody's totally out of control and there is no intervention. But I love how the police department are trained not only to arrest people, but to come in and see if they can settle it down. I've also been, I live in a neighborhood where our block was overcome with drug dealers and people using, and they were coming in, sleeping in the house next door that the fire destroyed, which the Fire Department saved us because it was such a huge fire. And had it not been knocked down, we would have lost our house maybe as well. And I've seen that with the work of our residents, our people living in that area, Clock Canal and with the police department. It's, it's not an issue. I mean, it happens. There's no easy answer. I really, really am so glad I'm not in your shoes. And I just, you know, go easy, be gentle with each other. This is really tough. And I just, I once again want to express my gratitude to the Brattleboro Police Department. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Marsha?
I'm Marsha Gosage, Brattleboro. I just want to say that I feel like a lot of the speakers now and throughout the year have made it seem like a zero-sum game. Brattleboro is either okay and doing well or it's a horrible dystopian place where no business can survive and we are all scared to be on the streets. But the truth is actually in the middle. I lived on Elliott Street near downtown for seven and a half years. I have walked home at night through downtown, late at night, as late as, you know, the last movie at the Latches or, you know, the last serving at restaurants. And I've never once felt scared or threatened. I have had my car tossed when I guess I forgot to lock it in the Hannaford's parking lot and I lost something that was really, really upsetting to lose. I've been part of a group on Elliott Street years ago, maybe five years ago, who worked really hard to get a drug dealer off our block. And we worked in tandem with the police department who told us what information it was that they needed, gave us magnets to put on our fridge with a line to call. It was very community-oriented and where everybody was kind of working together. But this rhetoric, like I said, I, I don't recognize the Brattleboro that is in some of these very, very scaremongery stories. Like I said, I walk downtown at night all the time, like constantly. I never have once felt unsafe. Somebody last week said, all of the vacant storefronts. Well, I drove here today and, and looked and the only vacant storefront downtown is the old Vermont store. Everything else is full. I mean, B-Nix is in the process of being, well, Sam's. But I mean, there's not really, all of, all of that area in the middle of down, of Main Street that had been vacant for so long is full and it's vibrant. I think maybe some retail sales are not being lost perhaps as much due to crime in some times, but due to economics. I used to shop downtown a lot. Penelope Wur is a store that my best friend, just everything in it is a perfect gift for her. And I used to shop two or three times a year for expensive gifts for her and I can no longer afford it. I used to shop at Brilliance. I can no longer afford it. You know, I love, used to boomerang especially all the time and I can no longer afford it. So I think a lot of it, I really wish that people would come into the middle and not think of things so much as like dystopian landscape or everything's great, we can give up now or something. Just, I really urge people to keep it to the middle. And I will say I've been in contact with Liz and John. And I have also been this week having great conversations with our legislators regarding what's possible, regarding what has been asked for, what has not been asked for and what's possible. So both representative and state senators. So if anybody would like to talk to me and join in with my efforts, being a citizen advocate is great too.
Okay, Heidi, and the woman with the spots next to Randy after Heidi.
Spotted woman. There was spotted woman.
They're not contagious, don't worry.
Heidi Fisher, District Seven. I want to say that I really support all these efforts of, that everyone else has been talking about. I'm not going to go there. But in the interest of the budget, I know that's what we're here for, as I've been here for the last six meetings. And I have a question about some of the numbers in the budget from, that was for tonight's meeting. And on pay, it was page five of 11. The sixth item says, collaborate police services with emergency response personnel and outreach teams to assist people in finding resources. And then this 10th one says, coordinate dedicated personnel trained in mental, mental health services. And the 14th one, the bottom one on that page says, collaborate to provide mental health assistance to call, at calls for service. And on the next page, the sixth one says, provide primary response to mental health-related calls and that do not involve public safety concerns. All add up to $457,000 to $565,000, all related to mental health issues. And I'm just wondering if there's any redundancy amongst those four line items that might be able to be reduced, even though I totally support the efforts that people are doing.
Chair McGlocklin, just for some of us who are a little slow at our page turning, would you be, could we have the speaker just repeat the first one or two?
On page five of 11, it was the sixth one down, which starts with collaborate police services. And then four below that, am I going too fast?
No, I'm, I'm caught up now, thank you.
Okay. So there were four of them that seem, maybe there's some redundancy there that can be addressed.
Okay, so, thank you, Heidi. Do you guys need a minute, Jeremy and Chief? Why don't I go to the woman with the spots and then give, give people some time to make the answer?
I'll be real quick. I just wanted to thank Chief Hardy for all of your work and your department's work and the Fire Department.
I'm sorry, I, I can't keep calling you the woman with the spots.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Alyssa, District Nine, RTM. My apologies. I just really wanted to thank everybody who came forth and supported the police department and the Fire Department, the BRAT team. I just want you to know, Chief Hardy, I, you weren't fear mongering me because those pictures, that's real life. You guys did that. You took that off, I'm sorry, I shouldn't be. You took that off the streets. And if that stuff would have made it to the streets, the community better fear that because that's not pretty. When it's, when it hits your children, when it hits your grandchildren, when it hits your fam, your aunt, your uncles, your neighbors, that's ugly, okay? And I know I have a real checkered past and I'm very familiar with addiction. I can't tell you how many funerals I've been to. That people I love kissing them goodbye because of this stuff. Thank you for getting it off the street. Keep on working hard. I hope that you get all the support you need from this Select Board because you deserve it and you're doing good work.
Thank you.
Nell?
Hi, everyone. My name is Nell Mayo, District Eight. I'm also newly on the Finance Committee. I am here in part to ask a question that has been being brought up in the Finance Committee and to try to speak shortly from perspective. I'm just under two years living here. I'm 24 years old. I started trying to get very involved in March. I've been at a good amount of the meetings this last month and I've been taking my own notes. I have 25 pages of notes tonight. The same could be said for most of these other meetings. My point being that for someone coming with very little context, I think it can be hard for many people in this room to hear cuts to the police service and not be quite aware of what that means. My awareness that I've gained just in the past couple of months is that most of the, really the only cuts that could be considered come in the form of the question of are the open PD positions, not the BRAT positions? Because I've been, as far as I'm aware, all the BRAT positions are filled, the fourth one most recently. So since we've heard a lot of discussion of how successful that BRAT team has been, I would hope that that would be reassuring to everyone here. The, the discussion, the question that I've heard raised in Finance Committee is the question of whether the open spaces in the regular staff of the police department are actively in the academy. Because I understand through the conversation of holding, reassessing open positions as opposed to nobody wants to cut filled positions, right? We're looking at attrition. We're not looking at firing people insofar as it can be avoided. David Levinbach came in and asked how many fully-trained police officers are on staff. And what he told me was the answer he was received was 26. So the question is, are the remainder already committed to in the academy? And that is not me trying to come from an anti-police perspective. That is me trying to represent a committee that I feel has an obligation to everyone here to try to make things a bit more accessible. And sorry, I'm trying to see if I have anything else to say. Sorry for that too. Yeah, that, that's, that is a question. I would, I would like to echo what Randy said about Mr. Potter. When you bring up the ordinance that was put down, I would, I was relatively aware of how controversial that was. And Randy mentioning the potential to be rewritten to avoid some of those controversies, but point towards potential, I guess, risk fees is what he called it from motel owners. I, as an individual, when voting on March 4th, saw the, like the referendum question suggesting recouping costs from high-call properties. It did not occur to me, the motels were not the first thing that occurred to me. This is because of my own personal experience and where I live and what I live next to. So perhaps even there could just be something specifically passed toward, pointed towards the motel owners. And then I would ask my question to be directed and thank you.
Thank you. Let me just ask you while you're here. Your, the committee, you are focused on reducing the budget?
Yes. Well, actually.
This is a gray area that I think is airing.
It's a gray area and it's an area that has been debated in recent meetings. I would say that the Finance Committee might echo what the previous Finance Committee member has said. And I would like to put in the clause that please don't consider me representing as everyone, right? We, we are a committee and I am the newest one there. That a lot of the overage, a lot of the large contributing costs in this budget are committed to, set in stone. So we can try to, the concern is with the structural stability of the budget. I think that is more what's echoed in the committee as I newly have been absorbing. So we have not talked about solid waste yet. Probably no one wants to have everyone haul their own things, but the high costs are solid waste and potentially unfilled positions. That's also been controversial. So I would say those are the two things that from my perspective, the Finance Committee is looking at exploring more so to open positions than to municipal waste. And aside from that, there's very little actual significant reduction that could be made. So I would say my impression is the focus is more on the structural and those two large items as opposed to actually realistically thinking a huge reduction could be made.
Thank you. And let me just say that no one over, because I asked you a question. Is there something that the police department wants to say relative to, I think it was Heidi's question?
Okay. I'm still trying to actually have an answer for Heidi's question. I, I kind of.
Take your time. Yeah, you had something else to say though.
Yeah, I wanted to answer because, well, first of all, I applaud you being young and being involved in this kind of, you know, situations and these, and joining committees and things like that. That's all very important. To your question, I believe it was the unfilled, if there were unfilled positions for the police department? And the number that Mr. Levinbach had as fully-trained officers was 26. But we have 29 officers because we have to be in the academy. Because in the state of Vermont, you are hired already when you go to the academy as opposed to like New Hampshire where you are not. And so they are hired. Those people that are in the academy are hired. We pay for their, all of their equipment they have to use in the academy. We pay for what they use in the academy and they are town employees.
And that is an opinion, or sorry, not an opinion. That is something that I believe is understood by myself as well as other Finance Committee members. I believe that Mr. Levinbach was just unclear about if they were in academy. And then if I could clarify that the budget and number is at 29 because it was three, it was four additional for BRAT, three additional for police. And then there was a data analyst position that got cut and one other I'm forgetting about?
It was the, for the police, it was 30.
Okay, so there is one potential unfilled role.
So there's one.
Okay.
And the BRAT is full.
So I, if I'm allowed, I would say that there might be some sentiment on the Finance Committee to look at that one uncommitted role.
Thank you very much. Star?
Good evening, everyone. Star LeTronica, I am the Director of the Library next door and I'm also a member of One Brattleboro. And I'm here tonight to express my appreciation and gratitude for the work of BPD and the BRAT. While library staff is adept at anticipating and diffusing difficult situations, we sometimes find ourselves in need of assistance. I have always been impressed by the professionalism exhibited by BPD officers who respond with calm compassion even in the most heightened situations. They have to calm me down usually. So the work of the embedded social workers have been invaluable in connecting people in distress with the resources they need. But the BRAT has been a remarkably effective innovation. Members of the BRAT have already established relationships and familiarity with many of the people who need support and I have seen them work magic. For example, a patron was exhibiting an extreme reaction. For example, a patron was exhibiting an extreme reaction to a substance and was in agony both physically and emotionally. Justin arrived without his cape and because the patron recognized him, there was an immediate connection. After a calming conversation away from the curiosity and concern of the public, both left quietly and with dignity. And the patron was out of danger and provided with a ride. Another example was a senior citizen who had missed the bus and needed to get home after dark several miles away in freezing weather. The BRAT was able to provide a ride home without a potential mishap on icy sidewalks or a cold-induced illness. There are a myriad of circumstances that require a public safety response that doesn't need to be a law enforcement response. Both incidents illustrate the humanity of this valuable human resources and were a comfort not only to those directly involved, but also to those who observed them. They not only attended to the person in need, but they were a comfort to the patrons and the staff of the library who worry about these folks. These efforts have also been regenerative through participation in the work of the Situation Table. So the library is a significant contributor to the social and physical ecosystem of downtown, but we don't do it alone. We serve a diverse clientele across all age groups and socioeconomic levels that brings a wide range of ever-changing needs. We provide a place for contemplation, conversation, exploring individual interests, and also communal connection, and of course, we have public restrooms. As Captain Petlock said earlier this evening, it's a piece of the solution. And also, I have to, even though the fire has left, EMS has been fabulous in helping us when people have overdosed in our restrooms. Supporting health and safety in this community cannot be accomplished in isolation. It can only happen in community with collaboration and compassion. I'm grateful to be in partnership with the BPD and the BRAT and together we truly are better. I also want to say, every first Saturday of the month, we host a legislative forum. So come and talk to your legislators at the library.
Thank you. All right, let's, Oscar, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Just, no, I'll hold it other than to say that the fire chief is actually in the doorway, so he got to hear your nice comment.
And Liz, in answer to Heidi's, I would, I think, just looking at these lines, I would like to speak with John Potter before we would give an answer.
Very good, all right. So we'll talk about it on Thursday. Let's move to Zoom because there's a number of very patient people there. And Seth, do you just get the ball rolling?
Could we get a recess at some point as well?
We could, yes. I just hate to make these people wait, but it has been two hours, so why don't we go to 10:15 and then take a break?
Thanks.
And just a quick programming note, we're about to lose our interpreters around 10. So if folks do need that option, the closed captioning option is in the lower right-hand corner of YouTube, Zoom, and Facebook.
Great, thank you Seth.
Got it. And so we're going to start with Hetty and then go to Gemma.
Good evening, can you hear me?
You can.
I'm Hetty Palmasi, District 7, RTM. And I want to thank everyone for the data and statistics that were presented tonight. It's always good to stay objective and unemotional about these things. I also wanted to express that the presentation supports the positive changes that my neighbors and I and family all see downtown and we appreciate all the positive changes. We, the people who I've spoken to in my district, do not support any cuts to the police department expenses or the downtown safety action program. That's my comment. And my question is, is the data and statistics posted anywhere for the town folks to see as well outside of this presentation today?
Sure. So, we can get the presentations that were shared today up online or in your next packet, something like that.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, we're working on that, okay, next.
Thanks for going to Gemma.
Hi, Gemma Seymour, District 8.
Yes, I can, thank you.
What I see in this meeting is people who have a vested interest in expanding the police department, pulling a snow job on this community, whether intentionally or not. We've heard a cavalcade of advocacy for the police department alongside an avalanche of data insurance that are not easily rebutted or even contextualized and comprehended. But we must be clear that the police enjoyed the largest proportional increase in discretionary spending, a whopping 17.9% year-over-year increase in the proposed budget submitted to RTM. That 17.9% increase was $517,000 out of an overall town budget increase of 9.2% or $2.1 million. That alone amounts to 24.4% of the overall budget increase. I fully understand how victims of crime in this town feel because I myself have been a victim of crime in this town. It is frightening, it is frustrating, and it is enraging. Everyone has a narrative. But I want to make a specific point of recognizing that increases in the number of calls to police and the number of arrests made by police are not the same thing as an increase in crimes. The determination of whether or not a crime has been committed is a function of the courts, not the police, and it is irresponsible to suggest otherwise. I am not here to dispute the data presented, only to point out that the data is being presented only by people who have a vested interest in a particular outcome and that their presentation is based upon their interpretation biases. Nobody here disputes that policing is an important function and nobody here wants a less safe Brattleboro. But we are all being asked to tighten our belts, we are all being asked to do more with less. The police department should not and cannot be exempted from this. We cannot afford to indulge our worst fears and still remain fiscally responsible without dramatically raising property taxes. If cuts have to be made, this is one of the only areas of the budget where cuts can be made. I will therefore reiterate my opinion as a voting member of representative town meeting that the police department budget as proposed must be cut, regardless of how necessary some people think spending more money on policing might be. And I will not ratify a budget that continues a 17.9% increase in funding for police. Remember, I am not talking about overall cuts to the police department budget relative to last year's budget, but merely a smaller increase in funding than 17.9%. If we as a town really want to spend this much money on policing, then the benefits of that policing primarily accrue to the landowners of this town. And so an increase in property taxes is the most appropriate means of funding that budget. If we don't want to increase property taxes to the level suggested by the previous select board, then we have to start the cuts for the largest discretionary spending increases we're adding. Thank you.
Next.
Go to Steve and then Farr.
Hi, my name is Steve Peterson, I'm in District 8. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
I just wanted to express my support for the police. I believe that we face a really critical issue right now in Brattleboro and that if we don't get a hold of the crime, if we can't get people to come back to downtown, if we can't improve the cycle of a healthy ecosystem that includes business, that includes their tax revenue, that includes employment for people, we could face a doom loop. And this is not fear mongering, it's a reality where crime takes hold in towns. And if we do not fund what is the critical central role of government, safety, then we could face really dramatic and really unpleasant circumstances down the road. We see this all over New England. We can't go down that route. I just think that the progressive approaches that Chief Hardy has been implementing are really laudable and they need to be continued. And it's not, that is preposterous to say that safety only accrues to landowners. How dare that respondent for saying so? It's everyone, it's shopkeepers, it's visitors, it's employees. Safety is all of us, thank you.
That we don't allow personal attacks, so.
Okay, sorry. I just take issue with the idea that safety accrues to landowners. I think that's quite a strident and irresponsible thing to say. I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, y'all, Farm East, District 9 rep. So, earlier on in this conversation, I was hearing a lot of comments about the great work that the BRAT team is doing, the police department, what they're doing, all the upstream wraparound services, all the innovation that's coming out of One Brattleboro and the Situation Table, the help that's been provided to some struggling members of our community. But I'd just like to point out that the core function of any police department is not unsurprisingly policing. All of these great social services that have lately been provided by the police department are, on the contrary, the core function of social services and human services agencies. One reason I've heard in this meeting that people call the police rather than the human services agencies themselves is because they can't rely on those agencies to show up in response to an emergent situation. But even in situations where this assumption is accurate, I can pretty much guarantee that human services agency staff, if they were funded at anything like, anything remotely approaching the level of the police department, I'm sure they would show up just as quickly and probably with a core training that is in most circumstances more appropriate to the issue at hand and without all the additional expenditures on specialized police cruisers, militarized response technology, et cetera, et cetera. So this might not be resolved in this budget, but I think it's time for a serious rethink to examine how these necessary services are funded and under which departments. You have hundreds of pages at your disposal from the Community Safety Review that nobody wants to talk about it anymore detailing how you might tease apart those different funding streams. And I would urge you to do so. But in the short term, I would at least urge you to hold off on hiring that one vacancy under the police department. Thank you.
Seth, who's next?
And we have Sheila Linton and then Dick DeGray.
Can people hear me okay now?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Great, hello, Sheila Linton, she heard her pronouns, District 9, Representative Town Meeting Member as well. I have a few comments that I wanted to make tonight as well as a few questions, so hopefully people can take down the questions that I have. And mention in Hardy's safety plan is one of the reasons why we're here today is because we didn't really get a full look at that before it was approved to bring us to the budget. And is that really where the sticking point is? Because even though, wow, I can have some appreciation for the work that's been done in the police department and the direction that it's going in, I'm just wondering, before the final proposal was given to the Select Board, if those organizations, agencies, or communities really had an opportunity to weigh in on it? And if I missed that, please let me know. The other thing I wanted to say were, I hear a lot about the Cs, which in this conversation are collaboration, compassion, care, and community. And I'm going to really highlight community as I talk later. But I had a real question that's been coming up for me that I haven't been able to answer myself and I'm wondering if both the fire or the police can answer this question of, who decides who goes out on a call? Is it fire, police, EMT, mental health, the BRAT team? Who when I make a call, who decides? I've been in many situations where I make a phone call and the whole troop shot, the fire, the aliens, the police, the everybody, it looks like the whole circus is going on. And I always wonder why that happens. And sometimes I've been in situations of late where I've requested specifically not for the police to come because it was a mental health concern or issue that did not need the police to be there for or other agencies such as HCRS or other care or mutual agencies were showing up. So I'm asking because they talked a lot about, each agency talked a lot about the number of calls that they're responding to, which obviously creates not only response time, but resources, paperwork, whatever that creates. But I'm wondering, is there a law, a policy, an MOU? Is there something that could be explained to us as a community? Or at least to me, who's very ignorant with understanding, how do you decide when you call 911? Really, who comes out? When it's not a criminal matter, when it's not a safety matter? Why are police usually almost 99% there? My other comment is, people being located unwillingly. You know, I heard some comments earlier and I don't think this was people's intentions of saying it like this, but I just wanted to bring attention to what I heard by some people saying, talking about the hotel program and this being in our community and the state needs to help us. I don't disagree with that, but the negative that I heard around it was almost like, but not in our town. And I'm sort of curious for those people who are complaining that these hotel programs are in our town, did you have a suggestion of where else they should be? Because I do, again, don't disagree with needing resources maybe from the state or otherwise to help us resource and be able to efficiently be able to support our community. But I'm not sure the rhetoric or narrative was to par with the values that we're talking about. It really sounded like, but not in my town. And if that's the case, then whose town are they supposed to go to? And I just wanted to remind people that people, there was, people were talking about 85% is not from our communities.
Sheila, Sheila, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay, there's all sorts of reasons for that. And so people are locating unwillingly because of lack of housing. And the last question that I really want to ask is, how does the town make the decisions to create more positions instead of supporting those other organizations who are doing the work? I'm just really curious of how the positions decided to get created in the town within the police department
Okay, Sheila.
Let me just finish my question that I'm about to finish, thank you. That, I'm trying to understand how they get placed within the police department rather than supporting the other human agencies that we all mentioned across the table numerous times about being collaborated with. It's a little bit of a disconnect for me and I would like to understand that more. Unfortunately, I'm being cut off and I have more questions, but would love to have options for a chat so I could leave those questions with people. Thank you.
Okay, so first of all, there's a three-minute limit which you've gone over. First, I'm not going to allow the question about human services because that's not germane to this discussion. But perhaps Chief Hardy can be interrogated about the dispatch question.
Yes. Okay, so how we decide who gets sent to a call is us and fire, we deal with triage, we deal with priority calls. Life safety is usually top priority. But what can happen a lot of times that we will know, and I think Sheila had, I tried to write down some of the questions that she had. So what we do know too is that calls that we get, sometimes from individuals that call for help, if they call not even just 911, because we feel if you call 911, you've already made, you've already decided it's an emergency. But if you call the dispatch center, we don't know what actually is going on on the other side of that line. And we've had people that have called for things that were not considered a dangerous call, like a person that called and told us that they fell off a ladder and they had actually been shot. So what we do is we go and we make sure, that's why we'll go in, we'll go with EMS and we'll make sure that the scene is safe. As someone stated, we've gone to scenes with our BRAT team or with our HCRS workers. And once we know that the scene is safe, we've left, you know? But we can't take everything at face value that it's safe for other individuals because we're sending our HCRS liaisons in and it may not be a safe situation. We've had this with domestic violence calls, we've had this with people that have called and just left their line open. And we've had the dispatchers call. And we've had the dispatchers call back and ask what's going on. And the person will say, oh, it was just a mistake. There's nothing going on here. But I really like maybe ambulance to come. And they'll get there and they'll call for help because it's a domestic violence situation. So that's how those decisions get made. They get made on a case-by-case basis, of course. But we always err on the side of safety and then we can pull back whatever resources go to that call after that.
Thank you, Chief. All right. It's 10:15. I promised a break. Mr. DeGray will have to wait. Let's have a five-minute break and come right back.
I thought it was Dick DeGray's comments about chartering a bus, bringing the whole-
Oh, excuse me, John. There's some sort of sound problem. Seth, can you address that?
Yep, I just messaged BCTV about it. Apparently, we're not getting audio on Facebook and YouTube.
Okay.
So Nolan, if you can hear me.
But is there scroll?
He says we're back, so we're sure to get now.
I'm sorry, John. Please continue.
Well, actually, that was what I had to say. It's basically Brattleboro is, we present the state population and we're housing 14% of the entire state motel program. And I don't think that's something that people recognize. And I think that we should not only get compensated for it, but I think the Select Board, like Dick DeGray suggested, should visit with the governor and the legislature. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So let's hear from the Select Board.
Jeremy?
We could answer the-
You have to answer for Heidi.
Well, that'd be great.
So I do have an answer for you. So this number is a whole number. When we worked through these numbers and the percentages that go with them with John, we looked at all of our staff. So for example, collaborate police services with emergency response personnel, not reach teams to assist people in finding resources. I hope I got that right because I don't have my glasses with me. That's, there's percentages in there from all of our forward-facing staff. So everyone from our animal control officer to our BRAT personnel to our police officers, when they're out on the street, do some of those functions. So we can't, we can't just put it in one person. All of those, that's a percentage of their work product. Does that make sense? Okay. And then the coordinate dedicated personnel training mental health services. That was a breakdown between, the number when it breaks out is between percentages of time that supervisory personnel oversee those functions and percentages of time that our dispatch personnel coordinate, triage, and dispatch those functions. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
The whole point is, is there any way we can-
Compress the-
And I'm sure that's been looked at, it'll be continued to be looked at and represented in Thursday's budget. Let's hear from the board. Everyone's eager to hear from the board. But the question before us, and maybe we should have a motion, is who would like to make the motion?
So motion as keeping the, oh, you have it? I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to direct the town manager to incorporate estimates for the following service reductions, following service reductions in the FY '26 general fund revision for initial consideration on the April 24th, 2025 for police and fire. Is that, yeah? All right.
And if you have any, please let me know.
So if we have any, or whether we're recommending any or not? So that's the discussion. So who would like to begin?
I'd like-
Please.
Go ahead. So first of all, thank you so much for taking the time, especially to all the people who are here in the public and all the people online, and for the chief and assistant chief. First point is that I believe that we have had, a majority of us have expressed interest in looking at the possibility of three new personnel for the fire department to save over, potentially over $100,000 in overtime expenses. I have just, I just want to first comment on the thoughtfulness of many of the speakers this evening. I've appreciated the vulnerability that people have shown with their personal stories. I appreciate the appreciation for our town staff that I've heard. And the tone of the conversation has been quite different from what I heard last September when I was at a meeting when we were talking about the proposed downtown safety action plan. And so I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that so many of you have shared your comments tonight. I want to thank the Brattleboro Police Department for your service, for your collaborative approach that you've talked about this evening, and for the focus on drug trafficking, which I think you've illustrated how that is a source of much of the problem in our town. You know, I personally have been the victim of, or have experienced violence in my direction when I was a child growing up here, and the Brattleboro Police Department showed up and supported. So did neighbors, teachers, principals. And it was all of the people who, everyone, made a difference. And so I have a deep appreciation for the work that our community does and that each of us, the role that each of us plays in creating a safe, safe community. You know, I have several questions because that's partly what we were elected to do, is to ask questions and to get information and to sort through it. And I want to say that these questions are not proposed cuts. They're not, but they are questions that I think we, the residents of this town, need answers to. And it would be useful for us in weighing the options because many people have expressed to me both a concern for safety and also a concern about the 12% proposed increase in the municipal taxes. I also want to just, I think maybe to start, we could just confirm, I heard- I also want to just, I, I think maybe to, to start, we could just confirm, I heard Gemma mention some seventeen percent increase, something about that. But what I'm looking at is the number, and I'm looking at from the, from representative town meeting when I was a RTM member, uh, in March, it, there's this binder and it says that we're looking at this budget of FY twenty-six of three million, uh, bit over three million dollars for the police, which would be a nineteen point nine percent increase. And the next highest department is five point seven percent increase, which would be for planning. I just wanted to confirm that that number is, is still what we're looking at right now. I'm looking at page one twenty-four of this big town report. And it says, um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're looking, that we're in agreement about what we're actually talking about in terms of the numbers.
John Potter's being interrogated.
So, no, the budget, I'll bring you back on Thursday. A draft budget will be different from that. And it will include any other changes you make tonight.
Okay, what, what are the changes that would be in there that are less than a nineteen point nine percent increase? Or where is this, this, this proposed per saving?
So, for example, at your meeting, two meetings ago, you reduced some of the police department expenses by, I believe, five thousand, five hundred dollars. We are also in the process of re-looking at all of the numbers in the budget, because we think that there were some errors made in the staffing, and we can also do some work on the overtime budget. So, we'll be bringing back ideas along those lines. So, they will be different than what you're reading there, Isaac, just off the top.
Thank you.
That will be the draft you'll be able to work from, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I have, as I mentioned, a few questions. The first one is that when I had the opportunity to do the ride-along, which is a valuable experience to see for, for just a few hours, what one officer was, was doing and experiencing and seeing, one of the things that we did was we waited out on Route thirty for cars going by, a bit of a, for speed check, potential traffic stops. And I didn't see that, and I might have just overlooked it. But I wanted to see, is that something that is in this, um, in this packet that we received? And, and if not, it, what is the dollar cost of the traffic control that, or not traffic control per se, but speed checks, if you understand what I'm talking about?
It's probably not in the packet. I don't know if it's in the packet or not.
I have a line for-
I don't think it would be broken down, right?
Uh, I have a line for direct traffic. I don't know if it would be-
I think there was a line for directed patrols.
Yeah, directed patrols.
Which doesn't speak specifically to all traffic, but feel like there was a line.
Because directed patrols deals with any place we've had a lot of complaints about. So, if we, if, if you went down there, that might have been one of the things we assigned to that officer for directed patrol. Doesn't mean directed patrol as far as trafficking, it can be whatever. It's a huge thing that we've had issues. And maybe that day, because I can't speak on, I would have to go back and look what day you were there, what was going on. Did we have a lot of complaints about speeding, uh, which we get a lot of complaints about speeding every day? So, it wouldn't have been anything new. But, um, that, but I think we did put a directed patrol, yeah. We, we have directed patrol money.
Yeah, so that is the third line down on page five, Isaac.
Okay, it would be very useful to have that, um,
Yeah.
breakdown. And, you know, I, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to get that question before tonight. You know, there's been a, been a rapid fire of these, of these meetings. So, I just would, would appreciate that information if that's something we could have, to be able to look at as-
Because we put in that the directed patrols, that if we have directed enforcement, because directed patrol is, like I said, it, it can deal with anything that we've had a bunch of complaints from the public. So, you know, we had the low range at two hundred and twenty thousand and the high range at two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So, that is, so that should be in this packet, your packet.
Sure. The question, though, is specifically around traffic and concerns about speeding.
So, you would want a breakdown of the speed control, too?
Yeah.
Okay, that, um, that's, that's, yeah, that's going to be hard.
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure with you there.
I don't know if we can do that. We'll have to look, because that, that might be what that officer's assignment was at that time. But that wouldn't be maybe something-
So, that's an occasional service.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. I would have to look to see if we can break that down. And plus, also, we have traffic control, speed control, any of those things are also officer-initiated. So, I would have to look into the system and see, you know, how, when that's happened, you know, so.
Thank you. John?
So, also, I, I will just remind the board that we're trying to have a draft budget for you on Thursday night. So, everyone come back for that meeting. But that gives me about three or four hours tomorrow morning to, uh, to work on any changes that you want to see here in this, to get it into that draft budget. So, I would love to know, like, if there are three of you that want to see reductions in the police budget, so that I know whether to spend that time on, on figuring out those reductions, or whether you want me to be just working on all of the issues that I have to get that pulled together for Thursday.
Oscar?
So, I'll, I'll bring it up. I would be interested in some way of, of understanding sort of the operational implications of not hiring the thirtieth officer. Not because I don't think it would be valuable, but just in this moment, um, I'm, it's something that I'm interested in, and if there's, so if, if it is operationally, it will completely, you know, ruin the structure of some, the, the BRAT team, or if there are those concerns, that would be interesting to know. If its capacity would be decreased by one thirtieth, and it would be more proportional, that would be interesting to know. And I don't necess-
Can we answer that for Thursday?
Yes, please.
Can I answer that for Thursday?
Yeah.
Because I would go back and look at my org chart, because every, all org charts are organizational and placement, and also, um, that's how we come up with, um, coverage.
Right.
And time, so I really like an opportunity to look at all of that before I have an answer.
Of course, of course.
And the commitment's already been made, though, correct?
We've made the commitment, yes, and that's going to be a whole, I was going to talk with John about that, because we've made the commitment, and we've also enlisted that person into the academy, so.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I must have understood, uh, misunderstood. I thought, yeah, I- Well, so, I think it's, it's probably just a misunderstanding. It sounded to me like we had twenty-six hired, three in the academy, and one just sort of nothing.
One committed, one committed for the summer academy.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that, and that's why I was like, kind of getting confused, because I know when we did the whole meeting last week, and we talked about the twenty-six, because the question was, um, how many fully trained officers, which was twenty-six, and how many were in the academy, which was three. But we have a commitment to the thirtieth person that we've already made and offered to, because that's why I tell, that's why I talk about what we can't do. We can't do a background check if we do not offer the person a position. We're not allowed to do that.
No, that makes total sense. I think I just misunderstood that before.
Okay, let's go back to Isaac and see if he had any other comments.
I, I was also interested in this question. When was that, just to have a better sense of the timeline of this process, when was that offer made?
When did we start, we assigned, you know, we assigned a detective. I don't want to say the wrong date. It's when we assigned the detective. So, it's been months ago, but we would have to pull that out. I don't want to give the wrong date.
Sure.
But we would know that by when a detective gets assigned to do their background. Oh, but you know what? We may have to offer.
Yeah, I'm looking.
Why don't we move on? I can get an answer to that while you're asking the next question.
Great, I just appreciate that.
It was made in October, Isaac.
Oh, it was made in October for the summer academy? That that's when they would start?
Yes.
And it just gives-
Well, it was for, originally for the winter academy, and then I believe that person had to postpone till the summer, so.
Just gives you an idea, as, you know, people were talking about the timeline and the September decision-making. It's been that long.
Yeah, it's been, it's been that long, yeah. And that, and too, when you do that, remembering that there's only two academies per year. So, if you don't make it in time for the winter academy, you have to wait till the spring academy.
Right. Isaac, anything else?
Yeah. So, and this is somewhat in line with the question that Heidi was asking, around the four hundred thousand plus dollars of various services that I understand are spread out over many officers. And it says, on this, in this packet, it says that eighty-five thousand to a hundred and four thousand dollars is for project care, one Brattleboro, and other initiatives. And I imagine those initiatives would include things like Cookies with a Cop, Toys for Tots, and other outreach for our community. That's quite a range of services and activities. Do you, can you give us a ballpark? And I'm not asking you on the, on the spot to have an exact breakdown. But do you have a sense of more or less what percentage of that is project care?
I do not have that, and I actually let my captain go home, who runs project care. But I can have that for you on Thursday, because that's, you know, that's what he does. I just let him go home, because he has little kids at home, so that's just-
Sure, sure. And then do other agencies that are part of one Brattleboro, and this may be a better question for the town manager, but do other agencies that are part of one Brattleboro receive town funds for participation in that program?
No, no. They may receive funds for various reasons, but not for that purpose.
Thank you. You know, I heard this evening, I think we all did, that things are getting better. Many people said that, that they feel positive about, and I've got, received emails, and I've heard testimonials, we heard it from STAR, about the BRAT officers and what a difference that has made. And I think there's some hope around that. What I'm interested to understand is who is currently supporting those BRAT officers? And how are you able to sustain that, that program with the staff that you currently have?
Right now, what we do is we've been, that, we've been kind of having every, the rest of the officers buy into what we're trying to do. So, we will break up assignments for an officer to be downtown. And we'll use like one of the senior officers to be downtown for a back, backup for BRAT, because we can't have BRAT downtown alone, because we've had an officer attacked downtown. So, that's a part of the entire plan, was to have a level-three officer available to not only be there for them for guidance, but also be there nearby for their protection, so that they wouldn't have to wait for an officer to respond from any other part of town to get to assist them.
Thank you very much. And then my, my final question, before coming back to the traffic stops question, is the, about the motel program, because this was a, a, a part of the presentation. When I was up at Econo Lodge on April first, I didn't, it may have just been the time that I was there, but I didn't see any town, and again, I don't know if this is, this question may be better suited for the town manager. But, you know, when there was the fire at SIT, I saw a tremendous response from this town. I was impressed. We gave accolades. We recognized the incredible service. On April first, when people were losing their shelter, including people who weren't able to figure out, people with disabilities in wheelchairs, can, using canes, who weren't able to figure out shelter and now are sleeping outside, I didn't see any town personnel there. And I was, that was like my first select board meeting on the job was that night. And I was wondering, did town personnel show up, and is there a plan for July first? And is that part of what the police department would, or, or BRAT officers, fire department EMS would be available to support with?
So, I, I don't know if anybody called us for help on that day at that time. But if they did, we, we would have responded, just like we did at SIT, but I'm not aware of any calls.
No, I haven't heard anything about a bunch of-
Let me clarify the question.
It's a state program.
Let me clarify, let me clarify the question. That there were Brattleboro residents who were losing their shelter, who were in distress, and I think we, I'm thinking about July first. I, I'm less, less worried about April first, because April first is past. But I'm looking to July first, and I'm thinking, if we're investing in this police, in the police department and the fire department, emergency services, and we know that our residents are, residents in our community are going to be experiencing an emergency, you know, it's a planned emergency. It's, and it's the state, I believe that the state and the federal government have much responsibility. It's unfair for our community. But I also understand that we as, I'm a, as a, as a resident of this town, I have a moral obligation to my neighbors, to the people who live a mile up the street. And I don't care what you've done, or why you're there, or what the forces are, or who put you there, or I see that as a moral responsibility of our town. And I want to know, is our, are this, the, is the personnel of our town going to show up along with the volunteers?
Oh, absolutely. And, is there an answer? An answer? Absolutely, we would show up with the volunteers. One of the reasons, okay, let me back up. First of all, with the hotel, because we were talking about when the hotel programs are supposed to end, right? This is like the third time I've been here that July first was supposed to be the time that the, that the hotel program was about to end. I sit on the, um, you know, I was the, um, emergency management director until such times we've had, I had the fire chief now. And so, I've sat on those meetings and, and getting ready meetings and, and preparing meetings. And so, when, when you say, will we be there, we, we will be there for them, just like we are for any member of our community. What we will not see, when people are being let out of the hotel, you may not see uniformed officers, because that is something that I always talked about, that we do not want that, because we don't want people to feel like we are basically just helping them lose their, their homes, or being, or being there as a enforcement part to kick them out of their, their homes. So, that's why we don't go unless someone calls us for help. But now with the BRAT team, we certainly can be there for anyone who needs help, and that's not just for the BRAT officers. That's our HCRS liaisons. We have two of them. We've, we've sent them to these situations. We've sent them to the hotels when people have lost their homes, and they didn't want to leave. So, we do try a kinder, gentler approach to help people that will, that are in need. And we do offer those services to them when we can. We try to, if, if there's somebody that's getting put out and they don't have anywhere to go, we usually will coordinate with Groundworks. We usually will coordinate with our liaisons to, to make it a little softer for them to have to leave, because, you know, and one of the things we always ask is, you know, when did you tell this person and how did you tell this person? Because we've seen people that have really gotten really upset, and this won't, won't leave the premises. But we are not in the habit, as the police department, for the police department part, we are not in the habit of evicting people. And, you know, I've been told that it's not eviction, but as far as I'm concerned, if you've stayed somewhere for three years and someone's paid your rent, and now you have to go, that's eviction, and we don't, we don't do that. But as far as the services that the BRAT and the whole idea of BRAT, we would absolutely offer services to that person.
Okay, so-
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Let me just keep the focus on the budget. And Isaac, if you have questions about the motel program, I suggest you have a call with Sue Graff.
And I will, I will just say that this has clearly been a, this is a budget item, because we heard how the motel, use of the motel program and the calls from the motel program are, you know, we heard more than half a million dollars. So, I would, I would actually request that we, we actually have a conversation as a community about the motel program, and what are the needs, and hear from different perspectives. You know, it would be great, I heard a lot of comments, some comments tonight that were concerning to me, and I think maybe to others, around the character of people who are experiencing difficulty, and, and that I think are unfair generalizations. And I don't think that's the community that we want to be. And so, I think that it would be, it would, it would be very much appropriate for us to have a conversation before July first about what we are doing in anticipation of that, so that we're prepared in case the legislature doesn't come through and give another delay. But to, to, there's one more point that I wanted to make, and I'm happy to, to, to wait and let my colleagues here ask some questions before I come back to it. But I wanted to address a couple of concerns that came up in the discussion today.
One more comment or so?
I mean, that's, that's why we're here.
Is it budget related?
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's about the process. Because two different, both Abby Manoukian and is it Randy? Blodja raised the question, saying that they would like to hear from multiple department directors. And, you know, have, like, we heard an hour-long presentation, even Chief Hardy, I heard you say that you were interested in that. And I wanted just to clarify for the public, for those who are still listening, that the, we actually, as a select board, decided to prioritize hearing from departments where there was, or areas where there was going to be the biggest increase. So we looked, we were going to have a discussion about trash the other night because that's one of the big half-million-dollar tickets. I know there's healthcare costs, but that's not something we see a whole lot of control over. Another thing is the Downtown Safety Action Plan and, and more broadly, Public Safety. So I wanted folks to leave, to understand why they're, we're not hearing from a member of a department director, that it was actually a, a consensus on this board and when we put together this very packed agenda for several meetings. I do think that it would make sense for us to have a conversation if there is still, I mean, it, just, and also to be clear about the library because that was proposed by one select board member, there was not a debate, really something to debate on that particular issue. We had a bunch of debate about other stuff. And we didn't have a poll, a straw poll, we didn't vote on that. So I just wanted to, to alleviate concerns about that. And my hope is if that continues to be on the chopping block, that, that there would be a chance for, along with things like public transit, that there's a discussion of cutting. But that would be something that we could have a, have an actual dedicated time with the department director because she was denied the opportunity to speak about those potential cuts.
And I suggest that we wait till Thursday to find out whether or not it's even relevant.
Okay, thank you.
Moving right along.
I'm, I'm not looking to cut anything out of the police or fire budget, plain, simple. Let's put a button on this. It's coming up on 11 o'clock.
How do you feel about the potential for adding new staff to reduce overtime in the Fire Department?
I think that is something we should definitely be taking a look at because it looks like there's definitely a cost savings there. It looks like people at our, at our, at our Finance Committee have actually suggested that, so I think we're on to something there.
Great. Amanda?
Okay, I want to commend our fellow citizens for their endurance tonight, for our town department heads, for Chief Hardy and this and Chief Evans. I admire everyone's willingness to speak up. I think it takes a lot of courage. We've gotten all, a lot of emails, a lot of phone calls about what's important to our citizens this week. And that's, keep them coming. That's really important. So there's, you can talk the talk and you can walk the walk. And I'm sitting next to two people who walk the walk and also our Fire Department that walks the walk. So I think we have to be very careful in our position as select board members to not think, am I not on?
Oh, my gosh. I said so many important things that the world didn't hear. Well, you know, that's just fine. That's just fine. But what I want to say is, our emergency service providers walk the walk. They walk it every day. They walk it 24/7. And our managers who coordinate the care for our community manage them 24/7 with expertise and care. So for us to sit at the select board table and think that we know so much is hard to, it's uncomfortable for me to sit in this position and, and be part of that. So what I want to say is, thank you. Thank you for walking the walk. And also, thank you to, you know, we're talking vicarious trauma. Citizens in our communities who experience vicarious trauma, police officers, fire, you know, service providers. It's, it's complex and it's real. And so for, we can't get high and mighty. We have to say, thank you. Thank you. We support you. Because that's what I've been hearing through emails and phone calls today. Whatever you do, do not change the public safety plan.
Is that where you stand?
That's where I stand, Peter. And I was not recorded, oh my gosh.
And how do you feel about fire overtime?
That's undecided and it's too late for me to think about that.
Oscar?
Yeah, thanks to everyone who's still here, particularly our department heads. But I will say that the one dog has fallen asleep and is not paying attention, so. I think it's fair to say that if, that I would have done this plan in a smaller way at the time or tried to find a way just because of how difficult the numbers are. That said, there's a big difference between doing something differently from the start and changing in midstream. I don't, right now, I don't want to recommend or push for any changes in the Downtown Safety Action Plan. The big elephant in the room right now for me is that I think in the next 24 hours, we're going to get a corrected budget with some substantially new numbers in it. And this whole conversation may take a turn on Thursday. And we may, well, no need to get ahead of ourselves, but some costs may go up in the budget and we may be looking at a, sort of a different problem. So a lot of what I feel about where we need to look for cuts and how seriously may be different on Thursday, but that's where I'm at right now. I do think we need to look at the addition, at least look at the additional hires in exchange for overtime for fire. That makes good sense to me. We'll still want to look at that overtime number in context. And I think that's it, yes. So just the fire overtime thing for me.
Great. Okay, so. Some people have stated that the climate emergency is a slow-rolling emergency that builds an urgency and awareness. And I compare the Brattleboro Public Safety Emergency as a similar slow-rolling emergency. And again, many choose not to acknowledge. And not acknowledging our, our crisis and the need to spend to address it is at our peril. This public safety plan is working in concert with social service agencies. And it's progressive, it's innovative, it's measured, it's full of de-escalation, understanding, and respect. I believe that the BRAT team and One Brattleboro are the solution, both short-term and long-term, to the emergency. I cannot not recognize John Potter for the hard work of putting this plan together, especially One Brattleboro and all the, all the team members. Progress in our town, social and economic development, cannot proceed without this Downtown Safety Plan and the full complement of police and fire. I hope we will all commit ourselves to educating the governor and our legislators about the costs, the municipal costs associated with the state motel program. We cannot move on from COVID and all our social, economic issues with the thorniest of all statewide problems left on our doorstep. As a select board member, I took an oath and my responsibility is to protect the town and all the people in it. To provide adequate police and fire for the benefit of all is our number-one duty. Safety is our number-one priority. I have deep respect and growing understanding of the reality of our town's community safety issues and appreciation to the men and women in this town who are the foundation of our public safety. I will not vote to curtail the Downtown Safety Action Plan or the planned operation of the police or fire and EMS. I support them as they support all of us and keep us safe. Anyone else? Any other last comments or I'll thank everybody and ask for a motion?
Well, we, we gave the motion.
Okay, yes.
Do we have to amend that?
Yeah, let's amend that with something, you know, pithy.
I have, you know, I asked a bunch of questions, but I didn't actually share my perspective on this. And I think that the residents, people who are still here deserve a chance to hear.
All right, you give us your perspective, I'll amend the motion.
So I'd like to read three short pieces of Hugh Barber's letter to the editor on April 15th. He said, "My plan would be to cut," looking at the fact that we're looking at 12% increase in property taxes, which many people have said is too much.
Right, but it's, it actually boils down to 6% with the school budget. That's the impact on the taxpayer.
Municipal budget, and what we have control over.
Right.
He said, "My plan would be to cut an employee in each of the largest departments, post a hiring freeze, except for the Finance Director's position, anticipate upcoming retirements, and let the numbers drop by attrition. This non-Draconian approach could save over a million dollars yearly and cut the tax increase in half, which should fly with RTM. My personal belief is that the town has an impressive staff of professional department heads and they need to get together with the town manager and make management decisions and recommendations to the select board, which balance the needs of the town and show allegiance to the citizens of Brattleboro, who ultimately pay the bills." And I think that's what's been happening in a very accelerated timeline with our town manager around getting the department heads, having a lot of conversations like this. I, what I see here, which I agree with, is the need for each department to be able to give something. We have five major departments, which all provide valuable services to our town. Police, Fire, Department of Public Works, I just listed those in the largest to smallest. And then also Library and Recreation and Parks. And we've heard from Recreation and Parks about how they can, they're going to do, increase revenue with, we talked about $5 per player, people in the athletically. I had a conversation with Star, and there are ways that the, the Library budget could be reduced without cutting the hours. We've, but that would be meaningful, that we're talking about more money than the, what the $5,500 that we talked about for the department, the Police Department. And we also heard from the Fire Department about a way to save over $100,000. So my question is, I, I heard the question that Heidi asked about these four different areas where there's, could be overlap. I also am looking at, okay, you know, I'm thinking traffic, we don't really know how much traffic, that service, speed, speed traps, how much that costs. But I'm looking, can we do something more than $5,500? Reduction from a 20% increase, potentially a 20% increase in our, in, in the department. I support the work that you're doing. I'm moved by the stories that I heard tonight about what the BRAT team, what Justin is doing. It's awesome to see the collaboration. And I commend the work that you've done because you took a department with low morale, with intense situation, with reduced numbers, and the Police Department has grown that to be a, a strong department. And I, I thank you for that work for our town. And I want to ask, what can we, where can there be give and where can there be each department taking, being able to bring something to the table? And I, you know, I think I voted on the other night down the, that we were going to cut, that one of the ideas was to cut 10,000 more dollars from the Police Department budget. And when we learned that it was for uniforms, they're like, we don't want to cut your uniforms. Like that's, you need your uniforms. I'm wondering where else might there be some savings? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that. But I, I would be, if, if there, if, if you're able to come up with something tonight, if there's something that you, you're able to bring on Thursday, I'd be really open to that.
And I've had just as many conversations with many people in the community who said, "Look for savings, don't touch police, fire, or Public Works." So, you know, it's all over the place. We've given our recommendations to John Potter. I think you're maybe the only voice still looking for savings from the Police Department. John?
Well, I, I will just remind Isaac that every department has brought something to the table. We cut almost $2 million out of the budget. And that involved every department bringing forward ideas. And for the police, it was, I think, over 60,000 of a position that is not being filled in addition to some expenses that you reduced at your last, at your meeting before last. So every department has contributed here. What we really need to know is if there are additional services that you want, that you want us to reduce in the budget, tell us what those are because we would like to know. That, we're happy to, you know, tell you what that would save, but we need to know what those are.
I think because, and I think because of the commitments that this town has made, the fact that I got a better understanding tonight around the hiring of the officers, I think there are real risks for us to cut those positions that we've just hired. I would like to see us explore more at, in earnest in, in future meetings about how we can help manage our expenses moving forward in looking at FY '27 and where there may be opportunities that don't, don't require laying people off but could help reduce the size of our, of our overall budget. And if there are areas, we looked at personnel, and that's something that I've advocated for because that's our biggest expenses at town. But given this, given this very compressed time, I don't, I'm not seeing a whole lot of room right there to make, be making cuts. Really, in, you know, I haven't heard a whole lot from any of the departments. I'll be interested to see what we come back with. But I would be interested in, in hearing if there are other, other areas that are not personnel-related because we haven't looked at that. You know, and that's what we did hear from the other departments, if there are non-personnel areas for savings.
Ready for a motion?
I just want to say, my, my understanding is we did that at our last meeting.
You're not on?
I, I am on now. My understanding is we did recommend some cuts. John's going to come back to us, thank you, John, on Thursday with the results of those cuts to see what, what we're looking at, how much should we cut? So my understanding is, like, let's, let's move on and let's go home. And, and I move to adjourn.
Well, you just said something that is actually a little, it just needs some clarification. I think we should leave people with clarity on this. Which is at the last meeting, we did look at, at cuts in three areas, cuts that the last board had proposed, had.
Isaac, do you have something you'd like to propose to cut? Because that, that's where we are. We don't, I, this is a circular conversation. If you have a specific thing, if you want Chief Hardy and you can get two other hands to go up as to cutting traffic stops, then make that suggestion. That's, that's what I'm getting into. I mean, like, time's precious.
Hey, Fish, if we could just lower the tone a little bit.
Time, time's, time's, time's like on here.
Can we just lower it a little bit?
You know what? Don't do that, all right? We are sitting here, we're having this conversation.
I will not be spoken to like that.
Neither will I, Isaac.
Okay, gentlemen. Isaac has up the room. Pete, read, read the motion.
All right, I motion to direct the town manager not to incorporate any service reductions into the FY '26 general fund revision, budget revision for initial consideration on the April 24th, 2025, and to investigate the savings that may occur from adding firefighters to the, to offset overtime.
Great. He just made a motion. I think we have to wait for our board member to return. Oscar, do you want to go see if he can get out?
Sure.
We'll wait one more minute. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll finish up. Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll finish up.
Yeah, let's do that.
Can I have this dabble?
No.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the Brattleboro Select Board, Peter's a motion. Peter, would you please read your motion again?
Read it again? All right. "I motion to direct the town manager not to incorporate any service reductions into the FY '26 general fund budget revision for initial consideration on April 24th, 2025, and to investigate the savings that may occur from adding firefighters to offset overtime."
Great. Peter's made a motion. All select board members in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
That motion says not to make any cuts except for the fire department, the fire staff. Should it say, don't make any cuts in fire and, because we've already talked about other cuts that have been made?
The topic is public safety, so that will do. Because there's no cuts and then for either service and then there's the opportunity to investigate the firefighters. So it's fine as it stands. And I think we all understand that.
I don't, but I agree.
Thank you. All right.
Talk in my language.
All right. So all select board members in...
I mean, could you read it again?
Sure.
With the proper words?
I'll read it. For the record. I'll read it. You've read it twice.
Come on.
Here we go. I'll put my glasses on and everything. "I move to direct the town manager not to incorporate any service reductions into the draft FY '26 general fund budget revision for initial consideration to reductions in public safety on the April 24th, 2025 budget and to investigate the savings that may occur from adding firefighters to offset overtime."
That's clear.
Clear. All select board members in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
So we're not going to discuss the motion?
Haven't we just been discussing it all evening?
There was a movement, a motion to end, to adjourn after Fish's.
I didn't recognize that. We went on break and I'm happy that you're back here with us.
She didn't recognize it.
I'm ready.
Okay. All select board members in favor of this motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All select board members not in favor of this motion, please raise your hand. Nay.
Nay.
All right. That's four to one. And thank you all very much. Amanda?
Oh, I moved to adjourn the meeting.
All select board members in favor of adjournment, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We are running out of here.